All right. Good evening and welcome to the city of Tularis six P M special meeting session. So we'll call to order and introduction to our study session. Comments at a special meeting are limited to items listed on the special meeting agenda. If you're joining us this evening, either in chambers or online and wish to speak on an issue, you will be allowed three minutes per item that we have in our study session. Tonight's study session is two point one presentation on parks and recreation master plan update. And the all important gopher abatement in parks. So with that, I will turn it over to staff for our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we're pleased to be here this evening. This is the result of there was a previous conversation and question or concern about what is staff doing with regards to implementing the parks master plan? And I assured council at that time that we're doing a lot. And you're going to see that tonight. And there's a few things that we're going to show you. Uh, one thing in particular that's new, a little bit new. We talked about it during the strategic planning session and uh, Chris is going to walk you through all of it. When we get to that item, I'll take, I'll take over there. Um, he's got a presentation that's kind of at a high, high level. And then we'll go through that and we'll stop. If you want him to, we can go much more deep. He's got a whole nother section of the presentation that gets further into weeds if you want to do that. Uh, but we wanted to make sure we leave time for questions and answers. And so we can get to the go for presentation. So Chris, uh, before he goes, parks master plan update was October of twenty three. So that's when that project was adopted and we're going to tell you what we've been doing since. Thanks, Chris.
Good evening, Council. The presentation is broken down into two parts. Let me see here. There we go. Uh, section one goes over the priority investment ranking, some of the projects we've done, some of the programming that we've implemented and have planned. Section two is kind of going into the different elements that can be incorporated into the park and the methodology behind that. Okay, so what they used is the priority uh, investment ranking. We'll go into this. Um, overall, for the master plan, the participants see the system as one that is well maintained with staff that's performing well. Uh, there is a targeted level of service standard for developed parks at four point zero acres per a thousand residents. Uh, the city is currently deficient by sixty four acres. Uh, it's deficient in athletic fields, sports courts, indoor recreation facilities, square footage, and a variety of other park and recreation amenities. A solid park system helps contribute not only to uh, the welfare of the community, but can also support economic development and residential development. The priority investment ranking was used by the consultants to, to kind of prioritize the different projects or elements of it. Uh, they use quantitative, which is a survey for rankings, uh, facilities and amenities, uh, generalizes the findings. And then they use a qualitative, which is basically the interpretation of people's experiences to create insights. Uh, the results get tabulated into three categories, high, medium, and low. So the high, high priority uh, amenities, we'll say, uh, includes the dog park, walking and biking trails, indoor walking tracks, community gardens, urban trails, indoor event, party, meeting space, lap pools, and outdoor large event space, uh, and amphitheater.
Second, so Chris and I'll do a little bit back and forth. Um, the, go back to the high priority. Nope, you're going to run. You're going the wrong direction. Yeah. So as you know already, we've already implemented a dog park. We are working on a community gardens project, which will be a separate council presentation in the near future. Um, we are working on an indoor event, party, meeting space type of project. Um, that's, that's the project we're working on the entertainment district. That's going to come back to you as a separate presentation in the future. And we already completed the large, outdoor, large event, uh, amphitheater space project. And I would argue as well, we don't have, say lap pools, but we invested five hundred thousand in the Mission Oak Pool Project. Uh, and we, by doing that project, you remember we locked down a twenty year lease for using West Tularis Pool for swim in the summertime for the folks on the west side. Uh, obviously all over the city, but it's located in the west side, which makes it easier to get to for, uh, you know, we haven't, we have probably a larger percentage of disadvantaged youth on that side of the town. And so they're able to get to that pool more easily. Thank you, Chris.
Mm hmm. So the medium priority projects, leisure pools, splash pads, indoor fitness equipment, indoor basically racket courts, outdoor educational areas, archery range, uh, outdoor racket courts, mountain hiking and bike trails, passive recreation space, indoor gym, outdoor track, outdoor fitness areas and or equipment, and then diamond athletic fields. And then the low priority would be outdoor basketball court, rectangular athletic fields, outdoor volleyball courts, disc golf, skate park, and BMX facility. So as Mark mentioned, some of the completed projects we have, uh, the Canine Bayou Dog Park, that was one of the high priority projects and that was completed uh, this summer. We had the Zoo Mall Park Amphitheater and Splash Pad, uh, a high priority and medium priority also completed this summer. Uh, at PSP last summer, we installed two new lighted full size basketball courts. In the southwest corner, that was considered a low priority project. And then as Mark mentioned, we had the Mission Oaks Pool, uh, and we have a ten year free use agreement with the pool. The, although elements of the master plan, they identified things. Sometimes it doesn't make sense. The cost of ownership for aquatic facility isn't worth it. So really, uh, entering into the agreement with the uh, Mission Oaks and using that is probably the best bang for our buck on a project like that. We have some operation maintenance projects we've completed. We, uh, there was an LED lighting upgrade. That was at Elk Bayou Soccer, PSP, Live Oak, Centennial, Cypress Rotary Skate Park. We installed three hundred and sixty cubic yards of uh, uh, we call it five R engineered wood fiber. At Caesar Chavez Bender, Live Oak, Mulcahy, Parkwood Meadows, and Tyler Park. We did various vandalism responsive repairs, tree pruning and planting, park signage replacement, and encampment cleanup. We also had some park specific projects, Centennial Park, we renovated the restrooms. Caesar Chavez, we replaced irrigation booster pump. Uh, both Elk Bayou Soccer and PSP, we did sports field maintenance. And then at the senior center, we did various landscape improvements. We planted twenty one trees and overseeded the turf. We have some planned projects. Uh, as you remember, we had agreed to go ahead and strike two tennis courts at Centennial Park. We hope to be adding a pickleball. Uh, that's a medium priority project and that should be completed by fall of twenty twenty five. And then as Mark mentioned, we'll be doing a community garden, uh, and hopes to be completed by spring twenty twenty six. Uh, pickleball is a medium priority, community gardens a high priority. Now, when you're looking at certain things, what makes sense? You have five indoor elements that they want to incorporate. So that obviously points to an indoor sports facility. You could spend uh, three million dollars building each, or you could do maybe five million and put them all in one. This would take care of uh, to two high priority projects and three medium priority projects, indoor walking tracks, event party space, fitness equipment, uh, racket courts, and an indoor gym. Okay, along the same lines, we have six outdoor elements that have been identified that can be incorporated into one facility, which would be an outdoor sports complex. These include the walking and biking trails, athletic fields, uh, soccer, softball, and baseball, outdoor racket courts, outdoor track, basketball courts, volleyball courts, and then an outdoor fitness areas. Now, remaining elements can be grouped with the Elk Bayou Regional Park remaster planning. Let me go back. The only element that's going to be difficult is mountain hiking and biking trails. So again, certain elements of the master plan just aren't going to be possible within our park system. So we're getting ready to prepare RFP to develop the park master plan, redevelop the park, uh, multi-use trails on each side of the bayou, foot bridges, uh, habitat restoration, and we are going to pursue grant funding opportunities.
Will you move off this? Let me speak to this a little bit, Council. So we talked about this a little bit, uh, during the budget process and strategic plan a little bit. This project is starting to accelerate a little bit, and I'll tell you why. Um, you'll recall that when we were doing the Zumwalt Park project in the dog park, when I first got here, I brought to your attention that we had about seven point five million dollars in park development impact fees. And we were coming up to a situation where about five million of them hadn't really been earmarked for any project. We didn't have any particular project earmarked for it, and I can't tell you why that was the way it was, but we needed to spend that money. And so we went ahead and did that on those two projects. And remember, park impact fees are typically for capacity building projects and not typically maintenance projects, right? I would say they can't be used for maintenance projects. Well, we're in a situation again now where we don't have a regional type of project to spend the funds on. We know we're working on the regional sportsplex. That project we're working on, and there'll be a separate council presentation in the future on that. That's a complex project and we're working on to bring you multiple options for your consideration. We are also working on that indoor sports catplex complex project as perhaps part of the entertainment district. That one will come to you sooner than the regional sportsplex because that one, we're already on phase two of the study. And how that would cost that, you know, theoretically, we could use some diff fees on that project. But the, the situation we're in right now is we have a bunch of projects going forward, single family subdivision. So we're going to continue to get diff fees coming in. We got to start thinking about where are we going to spend them? And ideally, we would find a smaller interim, less expensive project to spend them on, in particular because you'll remember you adopted this, uh, participation for developers in the skip program. That's a great program. It's going to help move developments forward. It's doing everything we wanted to do, but one of the, it's not a negative aspect of it, but one of the caveats to that program is if a developer funds a project through the skip program, then you, the city has to identify the use of those funds and expend those funds within three years. So instead of five years, it moves up to three years. So we need a project that we can put money in. Now, you could use those monies for a lot of things in a project. You know, we'd have to sit down and look at each one carefully, but I, I would argue that perhaps land acquisition costs, hiring, you know, designing the park, um, you know, and then obviously the park improvements, you know, are all things we could use that money on. This particular project, what we're thinking about is, yep. Skip, S C I P. Oh, I don't remember. So the skip program, remember, we brought that to you previously. I don't remember what the acronym is while I'm speaking. Thomas will probably look it up is my guess. But um, he doesn't off the top of his head. But uh, that's a program, remember, where developers could come in and they can, um, some of the physical improvements to their property, you know, water sewer improvements, those kinds of things. Um, they can submit their applications to the program. It's a statewide program, state level program, where developers put their projects in and then they go out and bond fund them and they generate the revenue to be able to pay for those improvements. And then the cost of those improvements go on the tax rolls. So it's kind of like, um, like, um, Melrose in a way, but it's for those physical improvements. And they can also put the, the impact fees, the fees that have to be paid to the city. The great thing for us about that is we get those fees paid right away in the very beginning of the project. We collect those fees.
So instead of the developer putting that money upfront, he builds it into what eventually will be the property tax.
Yes.
The purchaser of the property.
Yes.
So that the people who actually buy those homes and will use it in the future are the ones that pay for it.
Well, yes, but the people, those same people are the ones who pay the impact fees anyways now. They just pay them over time versus paying them all upfront when they buy their property and their house, right? Those are all rolled into the cost of the product. Yep. So it works well, in our opinion, for the developer and a consumer. Did you find that?
Yeah, it's, it could statewide community infrastructure program. And, and the other benefit there is, again, your typical home buyer, their impact fees are rolled into the purchase price of the home at whatever their mortgage rate it's financed at, as opposed to these when they go on the tax roll and they're rolled up into a government bond that, um, the, the state has managed at a lower interest rate.
Great point. Thank you for that. So when we talk about, was that all your question? Okay, so what we're thinking about in this project, and we're not, we don't need you to tell us today, yes or no. We're, I mean, unless you don't want to do any of this, then you tell us no. But um, our thinking is this is the area that you, that's within currently in the city limits for the Elk Bayou. You see at the southern end, the southwest end, that's highway ninety nine, and that's where the Elk Bayou Park currently is. And then you see the blue line, that's the Elk Bayou itself as it extends west to the edge of the city limits. Now, as you know, theoretically, as more properties are annexed into the city and develop, you know, that could extend further to the east. It could theoretically extend further to the west, but it's a little challenged getting over or under highway ninety nine. So that's something we're not currently thinking about. But that may be something that we would do as part of the master plan is contemplate the opportunities there. It's about a mile on each side. So if you start at the very northeast side and you traverse all the way down to the southwest on one side of the bayou, that's a mile. So if you had a footbridge at both, both the western and eastern, northeastern edge of the bayou crossing the bayou, you could have a two mile loop, right? And so you could theoretically have a five K run out there. Uh, we'd probably do DG trails. The other thing we look at doing, that's what I was coming to next. So we would have DG trails, you could do habitat restoration. So really restore the natural beauty of that area, have interpreted signage. You're not talking, nothing I've said so far is very much money. I mean, those things are pretty affordable in the big scope of things. That could be just a recreational amenity for our citizens. If you'd like us to further examine the possibility, you'll recall that when I was in Rockland, we did the Quarry Park Adventures project. That was uh, zip lines into an eighty foot granite quarry. It had a three story structure that people could, you know, maneuver throughout. It's about eighty feet tall. It had scaling on the walls and you would, you could jump off the edge and the, and the contraption would catch you. It's a, it's a tourist attraction. Now, we don't have a quarry here, but many zipline courses and or adventure parks, like if you go up to the one that's in Heavenly, they're, they're, they just traverse horizontally across the land or within the trees or on, within structures. And so you could theoretically put in zip lines and all kinds of other adventure elements in this area. You could probably do some kayaking on the Elk Bayou. I mean, again, it's, it's different than what you see now. Now, if you did that project, it cost you more money. I think, if I remember correctly, I think adventure, Quarry Park Adventures cost us three million. That is a profitable project. They make money and the operator makes money every year. The reason I'm bringing it up to you now is for two reasons. One is because when I was interviewing, you guys expressed interest. Could we do something like that as a tourist attraction here? And I would argue if we were, this might be a good place for it. The second reason is, um, it's not that expensive to do a project like that. Uh, and so you could build a nice little project in multiple phases. Phase one could be just put trails and then foot bridges. Phase two could be, you know, doing a separate RFP to bring it and venture operator. And, you know, you may be able to get them to pay for some of it or all of it, or it be a sort of a joint venture. We'd have to go down that path and see in Rockland, we built all of it, they operate it, and then the city generates revenue from it. Uh, but the third reason is because one of the challenges in this area is it's sort of, it's left over kind of no man's land. And so it's uncurated. If you had an adventure park operator who was here operating a business, they would be here, you know, every day of the week, sunrise to sunset, and they're curating the property and overseeing to make sure it's safe. We don't have gang activity or any of those other things that could kind of make their way down here or things that we've seen over time. So I'm not asking you to say, Mark, yes, go do Corey Park Adventures. What I am asking or suggesting to you is, one, we've already budgeted money for the RFP, so we're drafting that. We'd like to issue that to get a consultant to come and start looking at this area to give you ideas. Two, if you're supportive of that approach, we'll continue to go down that approach. If you want us to incorporate the idea of doing an adventure kind of element to this park, I'd like to know that today because we'll build that into the RFP. It doesn't mean you're committing to it. It just means we start looking at what could be done. And we would, we would send an RP out to the adventure park operators for them to submit proposals. Those could be two different processes or run simultaneously. Uh, and then we, and then three, if, what if you were interested in that? What I would do is schedule for a future meeting, a presentation on a Corey Park Adventures project, so you can really understand what was involved in all that. So I want to stop there and just take feedback to this first, everything we've talked about so far in this concept.
Caltrans would never allow this, but can you zip line over freeway ninety nine?
We would, and we would explore that, but I suspect no. I mean, what's really interesting is the ziplining is actually very, very, very safe. Um, you see videos of people doing things like bungee jumping. It's a different animal. Bungee jumping is very different than zipline. I'm not saying there can't be zipline accidents, but it's pretty safe situation. I think one of the reasons why you, Caltrans wouldn't allow is you, uh, it's not so much that somebody might fall. That could be it. It's that somebody would lose, you have loose things in your pockets, you drop your helmet, you drop your keys. Yes, and they're distracted. Yeah.
Um, if I can chime in, I think, uh, I like the, uh, the concept, but I guess for me, what, what I'm interested in is trying to see if there's room for both. We're trying to develop a, a park where people can go and enjoy nature. You know, ride your bike, walk, you know, look at whatever's out there, birds, whatever's floats your boat. You can go out there and check it out. My only concern is just adding the whole entertainment aspect, or, you know, not turn it into a Disneyland type of thing. I think I'm open to the idea of what you're talking about, incorporating that in the, uh, the districts that we've been talking about.
Entertainment district?
Entertainment district.
Is ziplining entertainment district? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, not just that, but the, I'm assuming you're talking about there being rides and I don't know what the Quarry Park Entertainment Amusement is like, but that's what I'm listening, that I'm hearing.
It's not like a fair, no, it's not ride.
Well, but you'll have, you'll have something, you know, well, that's what I'm thinking, and I think that's the clarification. So, so for me, it's, I would rather focus on the nature, natural part of it. That's what it lends itself to. And incorporating that idea in the entertainment district and making it more of an attraction for that and having two attractions.
Yeah, that's an option.
So that, that's kind of where my initial come from is. I mean, I, I think what you guys are looking to do in the master plan and the amenities. I mean, you know, the other place that I think that kind of does something similar is the Santa Fe Trail in terms of bringing the entire city together. It's the only thing that goes throughout the whole city, but it's not as big as this property where you can do more of the natural types of, you know, setups, you know? Yeah, you could probably run a.
The width of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the length longer, but the width.
Yeah, you could probably run a ten, you know, five K down the Santa Fe Trail, right? It'll close off streets. So, um, so that to me would be kind of like the second option, the Santa Fe Trail. What can we do, you know, to, to make it nicer for people? But, um, that's my only concern is just kind of splitting the two concepts and not necessarily in the, you know, at Bayou Park, so.
The city manager and I have talked about this before. And it's, uh, I kind of compare it to, uh, Mill Creek carryover by, say, behind the supervisory chambers. You know, they've got the, the signs out there describing what kind of birds are around there and other things. They've got, uh, they've got owl houses on some of the trees. It's a nice, quiet atmosphere to be in, either to walk in, run in, walk your dog or things like that. I'd be more interested in seeing it maintain that for the beginning, and then we can start looking at other options from there. I'd be more interested in seeing it maintain that for the beginning and then we can start looking at other options from there.
I personally um, have been on many zip lines. I think they're amazingly fun. Uh, I think cat kayaking sounds like a natural thing. Going down the river, enjoying the nature as well as ziplining. I think both of those activities. Uh, lend themselves to enjoying the, the fauna and the flora of the area. So I would be interested to see what that might, that kind of addition um, might be really. Draw a lot of people that live into Larry, not so much in bringing in tourists, but. I, I personally couldn't go and enjoy both of those. At eighty years old, they both enter, I do both of those things. So I think that would be something that would be entertaining for our, our um, residents. For the entire city to have that as well as the walking trails, the biking trails. Um, I, I would definitely utilize those because of the trees and the, that's already there. It's really a lovely area. To think about. So I, I would not be opposed to addition in the RFP to have a couple of those things.
Basically, I agree. The Elk Bayou, uh. One of the things that needs to be studied is normally, how often does water really run through there? And I think what you'll find is not very often. You know, we do have wet years like twenty twenty three. Where, you know, it flooded, but if you go right now, there's not that much. I don't know if there's any running right now, so.
Yep.
Yeah. So the idea that uh, that we'll build this around the river flow. We won't have a river flowing, but I agree that, you know, the zip line concept, the chamber had a trip several years ago to Costa Rica and we. Zip lined in Costa Rica and that was different than here. I mean, you look down and you couldn't see the ground. So that was a different, different experience. But it was exhilarating and one of the people that did it was Mrs. Sullivan, who was almost eighty at the time. She had moxie, I think is the word, which I think you do too. So I, uh, exploring is, is uh, is a good thing. So any RFP I'm in favor of to see what we could do by taking that park and turning it into something more.
Right now, the bayou is running right up to the very edge of the freeway. It's full. I take Sadie out there every Tuesday and Thursday and she swims out there in the swamp, really enjoys it. And it's been full for about uh. Two and a half months now, it's been running.
I think, Mark, from what you've presented in the objectives is. I really like that this whole site, we've got thirty acres plus to the north of Las Bina. You got thirty acres in the middle, twenty acres to the south. That's fifty, that's eighty acres altogether. Um, from everything you talked about, I like the vision of kind of a cornucopia. Of best use out of this property that the city already has and incorporating it into the riparian habitat of the Elk Bayou. Um, I think is a, is a jewel that we have right here that we're not utilizing to its best. Obviously, we own the, we own the land. Uh, we have a small existing, but you've talked about needing space. The shade, the environment, the access, and it seems to me of what everything staff has presented. We have an opportunity right in front of us. Uh, south to Larry, a lot of the development, east, west, north, but we're utilizing a space to the south, the improvement of visitors coming in with the. Ex, you know, expansion of the, actually, like I said, I think it's a jewel, but it seems to me you have space for parking. You have some space possibly for indoor, indoor buildings. You do have space for bike routes and out, outdoor activities. Again. When I say cornucopia, it's kind of that basket of everything that's available. I love that. And, and I think, I don't know about RFP and zip line or getting into the specifics. But of us putting a vision out there that this complex. Could host these different functions and a little bit of what everybody's interested. And what the community has had is awesome. And we've got the diff fees and we've got the start with it. Uh, just seems really incredible. And I, I think what council members touched on, the public. Would really gravitate because we've got existing mature trees out there, the shade, the landscape. Um, we can have nice things and we have a beautiful location uh, with the Elk Bayou. I, I really. Am excited to see this in front of us and excited, I did not know that the city had all that, the thirty acres plus a north of Las Bina. Um, that's great. It's, it's not so much that your eyes get bigger than your stomach. This has all the pieces, I think, that you're presenting and would love what that looks like moving forward.
I wanted to add one more thing. I'm looking at kind of my Google map uh, on here on my computer. The soccer fields are part of the complex technically. And I know that um, there's limitation on the fields because we get that every, every year, right? Between the two groups that are trying to use the soccer fields. Would it be possible to incorporate in the study, the uh, additional land to the east of that? I know that there's a farm, there's some farmland there and what I had heard from when I had kids playing in the soccer program that the. The farm, the person who owned it may be interested in selling some of it to expand the soccer fields east. So would it be possible to incorporate something in there? So basically, north, because the city limits are kind of, they're there. I don't think uh, part of the bayou technically is in the city from what I can tell, it's not in the city limits. And so um, from the map that I'm looking at, um, and so. They uh, the city limits are up against the soccer field. It's part of the bayou. May not be in the city, but it, but that's another thing. But if we can incorporate additional land to the east of the, of the uh, soccer field. Kind of what that would look like if we can buy it, if it's available.
Yes, so certainly we could do that. Let me just, we haven't talked about those soccer fields before, and I was going to save that conversation for. We talk about the regional sports, the new regional sportsplex. Um, it's my opinion, and I, and again, we're not looking to make any decisions on this today, but. It's my opinion that when we go to bring you a regional sportsplex, we, regardless, whatever the size is going to be, the master plan called for eighty acre. I think we ought to strongly, seriously consider relocating, building new soccer fields and abandoning these soccer fields that are here now. Um, and the reason for that is I think long term, these fields are going to be more productive for us developed. With development that's going to be surrounding the agri center and the airport, I think this has more the opportunity for development. Than just, I know we built a soccer field complex there and I know we have and we could easily buy more land and expand it, and that's going to be ultimately council's decision. But one of the things I'm going to appeal to you is to think about when we do, when we bring you to regional sportsplex concept. So what if we build brand new soccer fields somewhere else? And this could be incorporated then into commercial development or warehousing, storage, or. Uh, you know, some portion of it could be expanded as part of this project, right? So. I can't tell you all that yet because we need to study it. So I'm, I'm asking you just to hold on to that thought. But we will expand the area a little bit more to kind of zoom out a little bit further and look at what possibilities exist. I heard all of you say, uh, whatever we do, you want to make sure we preserve the um, and this is not the right word, the agrarian. The natural, uh, the riparian.
I don't think we'll have a choice, right?
Yeah, well, we have to, but, but we want to preserve that element. Like this is intended to be a natural. Sanctuary area first and foremost. So whatever we do, we want to protect that. So we've heard that loud and clear from all of you. Some of you are more open to the ideas of other expanded uses. So we'll try to keep it open to other ideas. So that when we come with the master plan, we can present you with like maybe two or three different options. What do you think about this or that, right? So we'll keep it open. And we'll also stay open to the possibility when we bring you the entertainment district and maybe there is a zip line. Adventure park that's built as part of that indoor facility, uh, rather than as this outdoor facility. So I think we have enough direction on this. Council, we, we will move forward on this one. Chris, I'm sorry, mayor?
No, just if we're done with the comments, that was a good break is then I'll also see if there's public comments at this.
Oh, can, can I ask one more question? That, that, all of these parcels are owned by the city of Tulare.
All but some of the ones, I think there's a couple of the south.
Well, I believe it's all but one.
What? Yeah, I, I was going to say except for.
Oh, sorry.
If, if I finish my sentence, a quarter acre parcel there. Now. Does anybody know the history of that particular parcel? Is, is it, it's not land logged? Is, is that a home or is that just a parcel and is it a potentially available to acquire so that we have everything?
We can study that in the, in the master plan process. Mayor, are we prepared? Or do you want to have public comments?
So it, I just wanted to open this up. I, I think this is a good segment of where we're at. If anybody's in, anybody in the chamber has public comment. On this presentation so far? Okay, clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? All right, okay. Mark, I'll hand it back to you.
And just to note, there's, you know, a couple of elements in the master plan, you know, called out disc golf. There was once disc golf out there. Uh, it was removed because it was underutilized. Archery range. I don't know if that's an element we want to have out to the public. Maybe it's a partnership as part of a, a adventure park idea to have a, a. Staffed archery range out there. I think a lot can be done with the master plan. Uh, master planning this park in the RFP, if we were to. Put in launch ramps at the east and west sides, when there is high water, we can bring your contractor out. He's got the kayaks and you can rent the kayaks. We could do little steps up to big steps. So looking at the high, medium and low priority and with what I went over, we've taken a chunk out. Of the identified elements of the master plan. Uh, I'm going to touch on the BMX. Uh, that's that second presentation, but I'd like to go into the recreation programming. Again, they use the same ranking, high priority fitness wellness classes for adult, free, low cost, community events. Cooking classes, art, dance, performing arts. Some of the items are going to be difficult because of space limitations. It would be very hard to do a cooking class in the community center because we have one, we don't even have a stove. So we are bound by space, space issues. Medium priority projects. Uh, for the sake of time, I'm not going to read all those. And for the uh, the recreation programming right now, we're just focusing on the high and medium. So new programming, we've added yoga and Zumba. These are considered the fitness wellness classes for adult. That was uh, one of the highest priorities as with the. Uh, ranking of two hundred. Those were implemented uh, in fall of twenty twenty four. And then we have yoga in the park and what we call hit the park. These are fitness and wellness classes. These are also free events. Or free classes. They are outdoor fitness programs. Mark, I think is getting forty people for yoga in the park now, so it's really taken off. Um, and then another one, we brought back adult volleyball. Uh, that was another high priority and those, we've doubled our numbers there. Youth, we've added the wiggle giggle classes, tiny tot hip hop and the youth indoor hockey. So we're kind of getting ages one through ten. Um, these all fall in the medium priority, uh, and they were all implemented fall of twenty twenty four. So as I mentioned, we have some planned programming. Pickleball with the striping, we're investigating doing possible pickle league, pickleball league or tournament. We're just not sure how to structure that yet. Uh, adult designated lap swim, planning for summer twenty twenty six and bringing back uh, youth volleyball for hopefully this fall. There was a slide left out, if I may. Real quick, we have some existing programming, our aquatics, all ages, our summer day camps and our best club. Oh, there it is. They're all tackling different elements of the uh, master plan for the recreation programming.
So council, as you see, um, I've probably never seen a city implement a master plan as fast as we have. We're not done. We got a long ways to go. Two really big projects, right? The indoor rec facility. And the regional sportsplex, what I would say is the crown jewel of our projects, regional sportsplex. I promise you, we're working on both of those. We will come back with presentations. Just keep in mind, both of those take a, take, I don't take, I don't say like take forever, but they take longer because you got to buy property, you know, you got to. Fund the, all the physical improvements. You got to do public surveys to really get more in the weeds on what they want. So. Those are all coming uh, before the end of this calendar year and you guys will be able to give us direction. I promise you, whatever direction you give us, you know, we're not going to dilly dally around. We implement stuff. That's what we do here. So. Have faith and, and be confident in what you're seeing. I think this is a great thing. Any questions before we go into the next?
I had a couple of questions from the presentation, Chris, if I can. So one, the youth indoor hockey. So where does that take place?
They do it at the activity center at the community center. They're on uh, Blackstone.
Okay, so is it just that one indoor location?
We have that and then we have what's called the Tulare Room. That's right across from our office. It's the big room there. Uh, we rent it out for events, but we also do yoga in there.
Okay, so it's, so its capacity is limited to then this, that space? Is there a capacity issue to space the point?
Yeah, it's, it's, excuse me, it's spaces to run the programs. So we have to, we could runs, you know, one Monday in the activity center from. Three to five and another one, five to seven and so on on Mondays and then Tuesdays, Wednesdays, certain classes you want to run two days a week. So we are limited on space.
Okay.
Indoor space to have classes.
Okay, so and, and the reason I'm asking, which in just understanding that is if we have a need for indoor space, but we're running youth hockey somewhere in an indoor space. But that doesn't, I, I, what I said, that doesn't mean it's apples to apples. So you wouldn't be able to play basketball. At the Blackstone Center inside.
No, that would be at Centennial, the youth center.
Oh, okay. So I'm just, we don't have, for example, if I'm correct, we don't have seven locations. We're doing youth indoor hockey. Sounds like we have two that we're doing.
One, really, yeah.
Okay. The second item on the list, you had it crossed off, was diamond athletic fields. And maybe I misinterpreted, but it seemed in the presentation of an expansion of diamond athletic fields. Maybe that wasn't the quest, but we had it, we had it scratched off. So I'm maybe missing the connection of how that's been implemented.
Going through the master plan and trying to kind of create log, logic out of it, I use some of my own terms. Uh, outdoor racket courts, whether it's pickleball, uh, tennis, indoor racket courts, whether it's racquetball. So I did the same thing. So. Uh, and I don't know if you noticed on there, it said rectangular athletic fields. So that would be soccer. Diamond fields would be softball or baseball. It would be whatever the greater need of the community is. So with a outdoor regional sports complex, you can incorporate, I don't know if you've heard of Big League Dreams. Uh, there's one in Manteca, but they take these elements, they work with the city and you could combine the different, okay, we can put four soccer fields here. Put the ball fields here. And the way they do it is in a layout that makes sense. Uh, you know, Elk Bayou soccer, it's kind of meeting our need. But functionally has some issues. It's hard to program. We have parking issues out there. We've already outgrown it.
Yeah, I, I think the part that grabbed me was just it being stricken off, but if, if I'm absorbing your report right. Is it with the meat, the reason why it's striking is because it's incorporated into like the square fields approach. So perhaps in a location, we'd have soccer fields, we'd have diamonds.
Yeah.
Or mixed use or so.
Exactly, yeah.
So it's, it's not to be interpreted that it's done or that it's a plan, but you have incorporated it into the ideas.
Right, you could put four diamonds to form a circle back to back and then on the perimeter, you can incorporate six soccer fields. So.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, yeah. I've had constituents get in touch with me and talk about the fact that, you know, like little league practice, um, you know, for, for ba, so baseball. All, all ages, they have no place to go. They, they have to go out in the country to practice, utilize what's out there at the. The regional schools, you know, like Palaverdy Oak Valley, Sundale, but, but what do we have within the city of Tulare that makes that available? I know there's, uh, I believe one at Saint Alwish's School, but does the city of Tulare have that available for?
No, that's going to be probably mostly the school districts on the fields. We have more of the uh, baseball at Live Oak. Softball at PSP. Uh, we do have one field uh, at Centennial.
I don't know. And, and there's no, no, no plan or no idea to add these. Or, or take existing parks and, and make something available for them to be able to practice um, and utilize. In, in preparation for the Tulare Baseball Association games. They, they, they have facilities there, but they're not open to practice. They're opening for uh. The, the league season and that type of thing.
Well, that was kind of the logic of lumping uh, different items into an outdoor sports complex. You could spend half a million dollars and put in one ball field, maybe in a park. Whereas you could get a bigger bang for your buck and do development, maybe get three for that price.
Okay.
Yeah, that the regional sportsplex, again, we, we have our ideas of what should be. Yeah, that the regional sportsplex, again, we, we have our ideas of what should be included. I know council members have their ideas. I know the public has their ideas. That's when we bring you back to regional sportsplex and we start forming what that thing looks like in shape, like there's a lot of discussion that's going to go because there's going to be, some people are going to line up and say, we need twelve soccer fields. Some people are going to say, we need eight softball fields. People are going to say, we need a mix. You know, that's going to be a very heavy conversation and that's coming.
So another question real quick for Chris, i- is, are there any indoor facilities or not city that can be used for recreation? I mean, have you explored any, like, the back of the, the indoor swap meet on West has space that could probably fit five of those rooms in one spot?
I just got a sheet today that we offer the public for rental space that I'm going to look into, maybe especially if we have, uh, use agreements with some of the different, whether it's a school district, possibly expanding into those areas.
Yeah, because I mean, like the old R and N, it's gutted out. You could probably do stuff in there. I mean, I mean, are there any other, I'm thinking outside the box, like, facilities that you can approach? I mean, like I said, the indoor swap meet has a huge back.
Well, we did.
Four or five times the size of this.
So we have, we have not internally as ma- as management had a discussion about going after existing buildings to see if we could buy them or lease them. That is a conversation we can certainly have. I would say if we were in a critical need right now of some, I don't care what it is. Let's say we had a huge indoor hockey contingent and, and the building burned down. And then I would say, yeah, let's immediately run out there and see if we can buy or rent another space to do that. I don't know that that's exactly our situation right now, but that, that comment does enter the equation as we start talking about some of these other larger moves, like, do we want to put everything at a regional sportsplex or do we want to sprinkle it out throughout the city, right? Centralized versus a decentralized approach. So that conversation is coming as well. Um, so just, we haven't specifically had that exact conversation today. Yeah.
Along the lines and in support of what Mr. Segologist said, I know in Hanford and my, I've got a granddaughter who turns six on Thursday and they went over to, they went over to Hanford to the trampoline facility they have in there. Mario, you may be familiar or somebody else may, and my understanding is they took it, a vacant commercial building and, and transformed it.
Yeah, it's in the mall. Very, very similar to, uh, Visalia Noble. Yeah, it's, um, next to Chuck E. Cheese in Visalia. There's a similar location.
Was that done by the city or was that done privately?
That's private development.
Okay, it's quite a complex, I guess.
I, I don't think a city would want to pursue a trampoline park as a liability. Those are mostly.
Yeah, there's a ton of like, there is. Um, the other thing I'll share with you, just keep in mind, remember the Alpine Vista Project? Remember that site? Remember we did a deal with the school board, the school district? So we're getting ready to put in the sidewalks and all that and there, I don't know, like, I don't know if, I don't know if Mario or Michael remembers. I don't know if we know exactly what they're going to put in. I, I know the contracts that they had to use some, they had to put in some sports fields and things like that, but I don't know if we know exactly how many. Do you recall that?
I don't recall exactly either, but it is, yeah, more sports field, open space.
Yeah, so that's going to be coming, because they have a timeline to do that. So that's in the next couple of years.
Well, I know the high school volleyball team and basketball team were using the fairgrounds as a place to practice as well. So those are some large facilities that are available for use for indoor.
Yeah, demolished, yeah. Okay, council, so we have the second part of our presentation. If you're ready for that, we want to talk about gophers. Unless, well, Chris, did you have anything else on this you wanted to go over?
The second part was just going into the individual, the splash pads, um.
Where we might locate them in the future, that kind of stuff.
Or are we going to gophers?
Why don't we, why don't we, we kind of need to know the gophers, even though it's more mundane. Maybe we can deal with the second piece when we come back at a future meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this squirrels and gophers or just gophers?
Yeah, actually it is touching on squirrels a little bit, but.
No, that's not graphic.
And I could kind of breeze through this and get to the meat that's at the end.
No puns.
Okay. All right, so right now we are currently using a contractor called Smoke and Borough. They use carbon monoxide in the burrows. Uh, the service is based on observed gopher activity. So we see a lot of activity at a park. We let them know. Uh, annual contract is about twenty-two thousand a year. There's other methods that could be used, kill traps, baits. Uh, the thing with kill traps is areas need to be secured. They need to keep an eye on it so kids don't get in there, people don't steal them. Baits are getting very regulated. I don't know if you've seen the articles about the blue meat and the pigs. That's because they're getting into the bait stations. Uh, carbon monoxide uses gas to kill gophers. Gopher dies in the burrow. It is a preferred method by the county. So Bender Park, what we did on this is, uh, council member Sayer brought us out to Centennial. So we said, you know what? Let's look at all the parks. Let's kind of evaluate it. So I went out, last month, looked at all these parks, kind of rated the activity. So Bender Park, squirrels are the main concern there. The ballfield is actually, could be considered hazardous. The big thing about squirrels versus gophers, squirrel holes are definitely an ankle breaker where gophers are more of a mound and more of a trip hazard. We don't have any programmed activities out there. It's rarely rented and it's surrounded by residential. Being surrounded by residential, I bring that up because that's key for control. If you look at, say Bender Park versus Live Oak Park, which is adjacent to open space, you're going to have a much harder time obtaining control or eliminating the problem. You can see the lower right, there's active squirrels. I counted fifteen out there. Blaine Park, it is on our current.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Yeah.
Sorry for just a plug. The beautiful pictures of Bender Park, just wanted to say too, if something perhaps in the horizon, we're talking about park master plan. So it's also a, a great space for potential additional lighting that meets soccer, practice, football and others. It has existing lighting, electricity at that location. So I'm just taking the moment to put a plug in that I think in the future, this would be a great one for consideration of adding lighting to get its best and most use out of. They do, yeah, trail to.
Uh, Blaine Park, it is on the contract. The activity is moderate scattered through the park. We don't have any programmed activities out there. Uh, there's no reservable fields. It's also, uh, surrounded by residential. So far this year, we've only spent three hundred and twenty dollars or four hours out there. Centennial Park, it is on the current contract. The gopher activity is moderate, high. The orange squares show where majority of the activity is. Uh, we do not have city programmed activities on the fields. Um, the ballfield is rented frequently and it borders, uh, the open space areas on the east. Caesar Chavez Park, it is not on the current con- contract. However, the gopher activity is low. Low activity on the ballfield and slopes. No city programmed activities. Rarely rented, borders residential and school. So any site that borders a school, our control can only be as good as the school's control. Cypress Park, not on our current contract, moderate activities, low activity on the ballfield. Uh, we do not have any city programmed activities. Uh, the fields are rented for softball. Del Lago, it's on the current contract, low to moderate out there. It's scattered throughout the park. We don't have any program, uh, activities. Mostly bordered by residential except for the pawning basins out there. And today they've spent fifty-four hours over the, out there. Elk Bayou Soccer Complex, it is on current contract. Gopher activity is more toward the high, high activity near the center of the park, uh, and that's going to be a tough one because of the open space that it borders. Uh, we spent about thirty-eight and a half hours out there this year so far.
It's also tough because it's used every day.
Yeah. Live Oak Park, it's not on the current contract. The activity is scattered throughout the park. Here's another one where squirrel activity is pretty bad. You'll see the pictures. The gopher activity is moderate. Um, the squirrel activity is high along, as, La Spina. There's not a lot of gopher activity on this, on the ballfield. Uh, it is rented for soccer and baseball and it also borders open space areas in the school. Uh, that's the top right, that's all squirrel there. And the bottom right. Mulcahy Park, not on current contract, low activity, no programmed city activities. It's actually maintained by the Tulare City School District. It's that far a little playground area. Parkwood Meadows Park, not on current contract, moderate activity. It's mostly in the flat turf area. We do not have any city programmed activities out there and it's surrounded by residential. PSP, it is on current contract. Gopher activity is moderate to high, scattered throughout the, uh, bottom, well, most ballfields. It's got very high use in rentals. It's bordered by open space. Uh, we've spent a little over seventy-one hours. Sunrise, not on the current contract, moderate activity, mostly in the flat turf areas. There is no city, uh, programmed activities. It's bordered by open space areas. Tyler Park, that's, uh, a little pocket park. Gopher activity is low. Most activity in the center of the park, surrounded by residential and we have no city programmed activities. Uh, the pocket parks, they're not on the current contract, but we have very minimal activity out there. We don't do any, uh, program cities, uh, activity out there. So in the current contract, we have Centennial, Del Lago, Elk Bayou, Prosperity, Blaine. They're all fighting for their share of the twenty-two thousand. As you could see when I did this, we had spent most of that nineteen, nineteen nine.
Chris, uh, if I could interject very briefly, a- across from Adore, uh, Creamery, um, there, there's that area that I think the city owns near Jim Pigeon's, um, um, muffler shop, not a muffler shop, what, what am I thinking? TNT Auto, uh, there's that area right in there that in the past has had a real squirrel problem and it's building up again. Are you familiar with that?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then we need to give that, I think we've talked about that before. Something, uh, that was when Jason was here. And something was done to eliminate that. Brian, Brian should be aware of that, but that ought to be included in what we're dealing with because it's right next to the railroad tracks. Centennial Park's on the other side. So what's going on?
Oh, yeah.
On the east side, it affects what's going on on the west side.
Okay, I know the area you're referring to.
Yeah.
And council member, I do believe that is railroad property.
It's what?
Railroad property. I remember we, we had some, um, conversations with them uh, when they realized that we were manicuring and that area and they made it quite clear that that was technically their property.
Okay.
So in trying to figure out how do we prioritize these, I came up with criteria. So high priority is going to be frequently programmed or rented athletic fields. Frequent, frequently reserved pavilions, parks with reservable fields and pavilions and that have high rodent activity. Medium is going to be parks with reservable athletic fields, parks with reservable pavilions with moderate activity. Low priority is going to be park without athletic fields or pavilions, uh, parks with reservable pavilions or low to no, uh, rodent activity.
Uh, before we move on to the, to the next one, uh, on the priorities, where, where would you rank community-based, you know, programs? I mean, like for example, like, uh, over at the Meadow Parks, there's no, as you mentioned, no park, uh, programming. But there's a lot of people that just pick up the ball and they're out there every day playing. So is there a difference between a bunch of people getting together and doing, do, and using a park like it should be used? And is there, does that fall somewhere in the priorities?
It does. My methodology was looking at if we as a city are going to be putting sports teams out there, whether it's youth or adult, I feel we have a responsibility to make sure the field's safe. Granted, every field should be safe. But you're going to see in the end, it's going to come down to money. Um, no, I agree with you. The observed activity I've seen at some of these parks have been low. Uh, again, it's trying to create, uh, a method to prioritize this based on, uh, use and active sports. Does that make sense?
So, so the entire budget for the city is twenty-two thousand?
Yes, sir.
And so that's what you're working on.
We're working on.
In future years, you can come and ask for double. I mean, we're going to spend a million dollars later on on some downtown initiative program from the.
I want to ask the money at the end of this, but that's what I'm saying. So if we're going to use a million dollars to finance some downtown restaurant
Yeah. projects, why can't we just? Take care of those parks.
I don't think it's as much as you think it's going to be. I was surprised.
Well, again, and I would, you know, counsel a couple of things. One is, uh, you know, it's council's prerogative. Whatever money you want to spend on a general fund surplus reserve, you can do that. Um, usually we bring a recommendation, um, and why. Some of those things, like you just referred to, some of that is investing money. I mean, don't take it the wrong way. I think investing in our parks is investing in our people. But there's a difference between investing money in our parks so that they're safe and they certainly are playable and limit our liability. But, or investing in projects that generate revenue. Because remember what we've said from the very beginning. We have to make sure we're investing the limited dollars we have in projects that ultimately will result in revenue coming into the city. So we have more revenue to do everything that we want to do. Please continue.
So you'll see, I kind of basically, you have park pavilion rentals and you have field, uh, rentals and usage. The colors just mean that they have both of them. One thing we don't really have data for is Prosperity Sports Park because it is programmed, as you can see, March through November. Um, weekend tournaments, daily tournaments, that thing is probably our most highly used, uh, athletic fields there. So based on that, I used last year's data to kind of look at the different, uh, amount of rentals. Uh, and on the right is my ranking for priority.
And you could, yeah, you may have a different ranking.
Exactly.
For example, from a political perspective, I'm not advocating you do this because we're trying to focus it around attacking gopher and, and squirrel activity, right? But council, for example, could ignore all of this and just say, I just want to make sure we do one, the priority ranking is we make sure, number one, we find one park in each council district and those all become, so there's five number ones and then there's five number twos. We could do this however you want to do it. We tried to focus it on solving the problem.
I think I, I opened this, uh, can of worms, uh, because of, uh, some of my constituents a- at Centennial Park having a really hard time with an activity that they had because there are so many gopher holes. But for the Prosperity Sports Park, I walk around that every morning. And the school district has a large portion adjacent to that between Live Oak Heritage and the Prosperity. And I see, um, people in that particular area gassing, I guess is what they're doing frequently. So that that area has very little, uh, gopher holes. The part that the ballparks don't seem to have a lot, but in the perimeter of that park where I walk, there are gopher holes all along there and that dirt then comes out onto the sidewalk.
Over the curbs, yeah.
The curbs and that, I've, I've mentioned that to Jason and to some others because it's very dangerous for me, walk, having to walk through that dirt and that mud. Um, so I, I would hope we could do something. I did talk to the school district too because it's on theirs as well. The dirt just piles out onto the sidewalk and there's a lot of us that walk around that because it's a mile and it's a good way to, to walk and get your exercise in the morning. So that concerned me a lot, um, in terms of maintenance. You know, if you gas them once, how, how soon do they come back? You know, and how often do they?
Well, that's why I noted certain areas that are surrounded by residential or open space. That definitely has an impact.
Yeah, because that is mostly all open space.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I just wanted to put that on the record about the, the dirt coming out onto the sidewalk. Because it's a, if you go and walk around that park, you'll see that that's a real hazard to people that are walking there.
What, what I've understood kind of in summary is you, the city staff, you have a ranking, if you will, and you need one. And you've based it off priority and moderate. But what I've also heard sta- stated is that if, if there's a specific need or a call for assistance or a major problem, you're open to that. So if we see in an area that this is really getting bad, that perhaps maybe is out of the ranking, but it's overtaking something or creating the issue, we have room to jump out and address that.
Yeah, yes.
That seems, you haven't completed the presentation, have you?
No. Well, we'd be robbing either of our.
Well, yeah, so that would save this council. Um, what staff tries to do is remember, we, and I'm not saying we're great at it, we're human beings, but um, we try to have the dollars that you give us to, to provide a base level of maintenance across the spectrum that's even to the, to the ability that we have. When we come into situations like this, we have some areas that are worse than others. So we have to adjust ourselves based on what we're trying to do is, is sort of you, I'll, I'll call it a semi-scientific method here. We could definitely do what you just described and we do that from time to time. The only concern I have about approaching it that way is, is the eye of beholder is different, right? Like if we're looking at every park and we can say, ah, this one's worse than that one and we have a citizen who lives in this house and only goes to that park. And they say, my God, this is a horrible situation. Kids are going to die. We say, that park is the best park compared to the others. Now we're making political decisions, right? So we just have to be, we have to monitor how we manage that issue. I painted it a gross example only to make the point.
So the contractors, he's going to give us a cost of basically twenty-four dollars per acre. So the. So the first five are the high priority parks, second five are the moderate priority parks. Uh, we could just say for five parks, it's going to be about twenty-nine thousand. Uh, for an additional five parks, it, uh, based on, and this is based on acreages too, it would be an additional twelve thousand. Now, here's where we're at. So if we want to focus on high priority and medium priority parks, you're looking at forty-one thousand minus the twenty-two, that leaves us a deficit of four seventy-two. Or we could say for the most part, ten parks, but that, that number's going to change according, because this is based on acreages. Uh, if we want to focus on just the high priority parks, we're looking at a def- or, or five parks, we're looking at a deficit of about seven thousand dollars. I believe that's it.
Well, I'm going to wait.
Go back to the last, the last screen. So the difference here that we're talking about is basically twelve thousand dollars.
Well, if we want to do the high and medium, it's going to be nineteen thousand. We could say it this way, if you want to do ten parks, it would be nineteen thousand roughly. If we just want to do five parks, it would be about seven thousand.
And the difference between the two is about twelve thousand dollars.
This is based on acreages as well. We have in the high priority, you have some, uh, you got PSP, you got Elk Bayou, they're big parks. If we want to look at maybe neighborhood and uh, pocket parks, it's going to be less.
But, but the higher price gives a better product to the community. And we're basically, let's say, talking between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, and this is for annual contracts, so this is a good way to start getting control of them. Once we do that, uh, Councilman Sayer, that area north at Centennial, where we have a lot of damage, we can go in there, we can bring in dirt, we can top dress it, overseed it. Once we get control, but it's just not worth it, we, we'd be throwing money down the drain. Um, another thing I'd like to, I didn't
Well, hold on, let's let him finish his presentation.
I thought he was already a question.
I, well, yeah.
I also want to look into uh, owl boxes. They are effective at some of the sports parks, PSP, Elk Bayou. Possibly working with a scout group to build them, and then we could install them. They do help. Now I'm done.
Uh, Jim Pigeon sells, what, are you familiar with the gopher boxes or Jim Pigeon's?
Traps.
Traps.
Yeah, we, we are familiar. We, we, if we use the traps, we have to quarter off the area, fence it so that kids can't get to the trap. Which is part of the reason why we prefer those, the gas.
So I think, uh,
What's the ask?
Well, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion to fund uh, the high, my, the high, uh, or the first option at forty-one thousand, maybe just round it up to forty-five, and that takes care of all ten parks. You know, the priorities, uh, some, as he, as Chris mentioned, some may need a little bit more work than others. But I think it addresses the thing, the whole, the whole, the entire city, at least for now, at least those ten pri- at least ten priorities, so. I'd be making a motion to, to uh, allocate uh, additional money from the current twenty-two to
Sagala, we got a motion in a second on your forty-five thousand.
I just want to make sure that it's clear.
So is there consensus with the forty-five thousand? Is there? City manager, does that give you the direction?
That gives us the direction we need, because we didn't advertise this as a vote, so that, that direction gives away, we will probably come back with a budget amendment to that effect.
Well, it's the, it's the great gopher caper, so we're going to fund that.
Don't leave out the squirrel.
Yeah, it seems the squirrels are worse.
I think, okay, the GS, the gopher squirrels.
Thank you, council.
You have a question.
Thank you.
Real quick, I didn't see Elk Bayou Park, I saw Elk Bayou Soccer Complex. I didn't see Elk Bayou Park.
You're right, I didn't include Elk Bayou because we are looking at remaster planning it. Um, I think we'd be throwing money down the drain out there because it, there is so much open space. I haven't, I didn't see a lot of squirrel activity out there, for whatever reason, uh, there is gophers, but we also don't have playing fields out there.
So we're going to take out the existing restroom, the one pump and tank out of that park?
Yeah, I, well, that's what we had talked, well, no, I, none of those projects got approved.
We, we're going to come back to you when we do the master plan to address all these issues.
Okay. So we're all good with that? Well, any other?
We just want to ask point on, on the, Mark, on the master plan, is there any, do you see any problem also looking at uh, our basins as potential parks? Because you know, there's the, the basin on West and Cross. That, and when, there's other ones around, see, but in my mind, I have the one on West and Cross, it's just behind it. It's a big basin. Can some of those be considered regionals parks or neighborhood parks or, I mean, I'm just asking, can you incorporate that in the study?
Yeah, so in the park master plan, and I'm trying to remember now, unfortunately, we don't, I mean, Chris is new to us, but he maybe remember reading it, and maybe Mario remembers. I, I think we included basins in the overall park acreage, or we excluded, do you remember that answer?
It's complicated. It depends. We have certain standards, and Michael can talk to it a little bit too. There have to be certain slope standards.
Oh, that's right.
And then a portion of it, like if you look at Live Oak, a portion of it is used for flood control or during a storm event. And so we have to know how, how much of it is, is it out of commission, how many days of the year for it to be, you know.
What I'm looking at specifically is that some cities, like when I worked in LA, when I worked out, you know, with city council in LA. Some basins were like the uh, Roman, uh, what do they, what do they call the, where they would capture water, but they would have systems, thank you. So they would build an actual system program where it would capture the water. But the top end, they would put soil and grass, and there'd be at least a, a park for kids to run in, so. I mean, I'm looking at that kind of opportunity, because yes, I mean, I think, you know, I, I've had my concerns with whether we count a basin as a park in the development, I don't think so, but since they're already there, can we study that as part of the process?
I'm not sure if I understand, um, we, we can talk a little bit more offline on what your point is. And, and I do recall that it was a depend on slopes and things like that.
Okay. Just in the effort of time with that, and I think council members, sure, any other additional questions or comments? Uh, email staff and email Mark. And with that, at seven fifteen, I will close our special meeting. And I'm going to give a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene our regular city council meeting.
I'll call out, uh, waiting for our council members, Sagala. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, get our meeting started as we're a few minutes behind now. But with that, I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Tulare City Council. Welcome, members of the public, staff and fellow council members. Uh, with that, we're going to move forward on our pledge of allegiance and invocation. And I have asked if you would please stand with community member Jason Bender, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing with council member Terry Sayer for our invocation.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly father, we come before thee this evening as citizens of Tulare and servants of the citizens. We pray that you'll be with us as we deliberate and discuss and take upon us decision-making for the well-being of our city. We pray that we will have your guidance and wisdom to help support us. Please bless our city and bless it with health, wealth and happiness. Keep us to be kind and loving one to another, that we might make the world a better place. We say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right. So next on our agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar be pulled for discussion purposes. Later on the agenda, we have a public hearing and general business. Comments will be heard at that time when those items are discussed. For those that are not in chamber, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. That's five five nine three six six one eight four nine for your public comment and the city clerk will assist you with your call. So starting public comment, I do have a yellow card submitted from Barbara Harrell. Good evening, Barbara, welcome.
Good evening, council and everyone attending. Uh, my name is Barbara Harrell. I am president of the Tulare Hospital and Community Health Foundation. And I've asked Melissa to, she has some information for you about a fundraiser we have coming up. It's called Proud to Wear Pink. It's in the support of those who have gone through and are going through cancer. It's a luncheon that's coming up September twenty-seventh on a Saturday. And so, um, anyway, just gave you the information and hope you all can attend. If you have any questions, please, you can give me a call or you can also call our office, um, on Cherry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to make public comment? Lan McCook, do we have anyone on the phone? Moving forward on our agenda, communications.
No communication.
All right. And next is item eight, council reports and items of interest. And, uh, I'm gonna start with our vice mayor, Mr. Steve Harrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the seventeenth, I met with, uh, councilman Maderos and the city manager at the dog park in regards to, uh, determining the location for the statue of K-9 Bane that will be placed there. On the thirty-first, attended the ribbon cutting for T-Biz, which is, uh, it's kinda hard to describe the operation. It's, it's fantastic. It's gonna be something great for the city of Tulare.
I'm gonna mix it up a little bit. Councilman Maderos.
I did the, uh, two things that the vice mayor indicated that I did. And, uh, other than that, I want to, uh, welcome to the dais, uh, Jason Bowling. Welcome, Jason. And also Manny Correa, Manny. Uh, it's nice to have you on board and, uh, it, it, it's about time. Let's put it that way. As hard as you two work for the city of Tulare, thank you.
And Councilman Sagala.
Uh, I also did attend the Artillery Business Innovations on Ribbon Cutting. It's a great, uh, program and invite everyone to go at least take a tour. I'm sure we all know someone that would benefit tremendously from their programming. Also had the opportunity to, um, attend the backpack giveaway that the Artillery Police Department, Fire Department, along with the Race Communications and the Parks Department did a fantastic job. There were close to maybe nine hundred backpacks, seven hundred backpacks that were given out to a number of kids. But not only was it a backpack event, they had, uh, Mission Oak Marching Band. They had a number of other, uh, vendors, AlTura and others that were there. Boy Scouts were there, had a chance to talk with the Boy Scout folks. And it was a great event, so I wanted to thank them, um, held over at the, um, at Bender Park. And it was a great event, so thank you for that. And then, uh, also had the opportunity to, um, attend the, uh, latest concert that we had at Zuma Park. It was a very, uh, nice evening, uh, well-attended and, um, those were some of the things that I participated in the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Councilmember Sayer.
Um, I was able to attend an encampment meeting with the code enforcement. And I just want to, um, recognize the progress that they've made at the encampment. It's really amazing and I appreciate all the work that Manny and his team have done there as well as the T-B, T-Biz grand opening, which was really a lot of fun and a success. I hope some of you are able to attend that. And Monday, I was able to do a leadership training at Western High School with their, um, band students, which was really a fun thing to do too. So I appreciate any time I can interact with the youth.
All right. Moving forward, um, item nine is con- I'm just trying to move forward. Consent calendar? Not that I'm bypassing my report, but I touched on the same things that you kind of heard here. Uh, consent calendar, all matters listed in the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. Council, is there any, um, requests for pulling items?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that nine point six and, uh, nine point nine be, um, taken out of the consent calendar? Are taken off the consent calendar? Yes. And if there are no other council members wishing to pull any items, then I would, uh, make a motion to adopt our, um, consent calendar. Mine is nine point six and my nine, nine point nine.
Second.
So motion and second for consent calendar, removing nine point six and nine point nine. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, Councilman Sagala, nine point six.
Uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, council members, this particular item is an item that, uh, would, uh, require us to authorize city engineer to execute, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six disadvantaged business enterprise program implementation agreement with Caltrans, uh, the Department of Transportation. Uh, I did talk to our city manager about this and I have talked to Michael Miller briefly about this. Uh, I thought it'd be an opportunity for, uh, me to ask, uh, our staff, uh, how we could, um, work to help, uh, some of our small businesses that have gone through the Caltrans process. I, I think the city of Fresno offers the, uh, the classification of DBE, MBE and, and others, a couple of partners across the, uh, the state, uh, folks that, uh, make the investment to be certified as a that designation. If there was a list or some kind of listing that the city could have, that could pa-pass on to, um, construction companies or, or folks that are working with us on various projects. And so that was kind of the reason why I pulled it. Um, I, you know, I did get an explanation from, from Mark and, and an E, uh, website, uh, where some of that stuff can be stored, but I, I personally had a difficult time navigating that website. But I wanted to see if there was anything that would prevent the city from having our residents say, hey, I have a DBE, MBE type of, uh, certification and this, and I'm a construction, I'm a electrical company, I'm an engineering company, whatever it is, so that we could be able to share that with folks that are building in our city. Now, it's up to them to decide whether to use them or not. Um, and I know some projects require certain percentages, right, of, of that type of, of work? So that's my question is, you know, i-is it something that the city could put together a listing for folks to come and show their certifications?
Um, that's certainly something I would suggest that we could maintain a list of, of, uh, entities that come to us and make us aware of their status as opposed to having it be the city's responsibility to seek out and find them. Because Caltrans does have that resource available to where, uh, contractors, as they're, um, printing together bids for projects, they can use the Caltrans website to find, um, DBEs that are located. Isn't, as you said, it's maybe not the, the simplest website to find. We could also offer in our pre-construction meetings, or I'm sorry, pre-bid meetings with contractors to assist them if they need assistance in navigating that website. But, um, I wouldn't be opposed to, um, having a list of, uh, DBE firms if they wanted to contact the city and get put on that list.
The only thing I would add to that is a couple of comments. One is to Michael's first point, which is, um, I would agree that we don't, we do not want to be in the business of, one, finding them, or two, verifying them. They'll need to, if they, if we're gonna do this list, my recommendation would be that they have to produce the evidence to us that shows us they have the certification, it says DBE. I would also say we're not in the business of annually calling them and, hey, send us your, you make sure you are. This is a list that we provide that says these individuals have advised us that they are, but we're not, we're not verifying that they are. Because I don't wanna be in a situation where somebody submits a proposal and then they come back to the city and say, well, wait a minute, the city verified that I was a DBA and we, DBE, and we never did that, right? And then the third thing is just to make sure everyone's clear that we're not endorsing any of the firms.
Right, and, and when we talked about that, I have no problems with that. I think whatever the simplest way is, but I think that, and, and from my research on that website, there's a lot of work codes, right? There's a lot of work codes that say, hey, I lay down concrete or I do electrical work or I do plumbing. I just think that there, I've been approached by a lot of, uh, minority businesses and women businesses to saying, hey, how can we work with the city or how can we work on the freeway construction? Or how can we work on this department or this project? And I think that I, I'm okay if we make it available, say, hey, if you want to come and sign up and say, hey, you can do this according to your work code and obviously you are certified. Then when you have those pre-bid meetings or this, or someone contractor, hey, I need to do this work. Do you guys have any, uh, minority businesses that I can partner with? Well, here's a list, you do your due diligence, make sure they're up to date. I think that would be very helpful to try to bring some more businesses to, to those folks. So, um, if that's something staff is comfortable with, I, I'm okay with that, that sort of level. I mean, I'm not asking us to go out to certify, to review their documents, but to take their word that, hey, we are certified. Um, because, you know, I, I don't know that process. I don't know if contractors come to the city and say, hey, is there a local Tulare resident that we can work with, so?
The only other comment I would share, I just want council to be aware of this, is we get, there's two other comments. We get requests all the time from people to say, you know, they come to our building department, for example, and say, hey, I need to hire electrician, you know, who do you recommend? Right, so we don't get into that business at all. Sometimes we will say, well, here's a listing of electricians we're aware of that are in the city. The, the second un, the second other comment is, um, keep in mind that if we have this list and we advertise for this list, we're gonna get DBEs from all over the state. So it's not gonna be just businesses in Tulare, the city of Tulare, Tulare County. We could run into a little bit of a situation where people, I could see a local subcontractor say, wait a minute, you by virtue of providing people that list are recommending that they hire this firm from Fresno, whatever, an electrician. I'm an electrician, been an electrician in the city of Tulare for forty-five years and you're not telling people about my business. I just want you to be mindful of, we may get some of that complaints.
Well, I mean- If I could interject, aren't we beyond what this, uh, item indicates? I mean, what this item indicates is that for us to be, for the city of Tulare to be eligible to receive federal funding on any transportation-related project, the city must have an approved disadvantaged business enterprise program in place. Caltrans has revamped their program. There's a two-stage process. First, we have to enter into the Caltrans agreement. I'm prepared to do that. There, second, I think you've just, we discussed that during the break, is that right? What's second, Michael?
Um, that's the individual, um, as projects come on that require DBE, we have to determine a, a goal to try to meet a participation.
So fundamentally, what you need now from this council is that we approve the agreement with Caltrans to enter into the program. All this other stuff is secondary and can be implemented at a later time. So in that regard, we're getting beyond what the agenda item is. The agenda item is, do we enter into the agreement with Caltrans?
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, I mean, I believe the conversation is determined to the topic. I mean, I defer to the city attorney if that's not the case. But what I'm trying to do is, I don't, I don't know how often this comes to council. This is the first time in eight years that I remember voting on this. I don't know if it's, you know, but, but it's an opportunity for us to ti-to try to help our residents to go through that process and know, hey, you know, we are gonna enter an agreement, as you stated, but we're also willing to help our local city DBE minority businesses try to get a piece of the pie, I guess, if I can describe it, when it comes to public works projects, so.
But, Michael, can you, Michael, can you, uh, implement, uh, or at least take, Mark, take a look at? That's what, whether, uh, what do we do? I, I don't understand what we're doing beyond what the agenda is.
I think the simplest thing council would be for you to vote on this item as it's presented and perhaps council member Sagala submit one of the forms we could bring back to a council for future discussion about, you know, do you have an interest in us developing our own DBE list that we can?
Fine.
Yeah, it's fine. I get three shots at every council meeting, so I'm sure I'll fill one of those. Thank you.
Well, so in review, what we have is- Wait a second. I wasn't taking a shot, Mr. Sagala. I was, what I was saying is, let's stay to the agenda.
No, I'm saying I get a shot at three items every council meeting, so I will fill one of those with this.
I am now aware of this, I've always been aware of that and we're finding that that is the case. And I guess we'll have to deal with every council member, all three of them. I will make a motion as recommended by the city engineer to execute the twenty-five, twenty-sixth, uh, DBE program implementation agreement with the California Department of Transportation as recommended by our city engineer.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and second for approval of nine point six DBE program implementation. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving forward, next on the agendas was nine point nine. Correction to resolution declaring surplus property, Councilman Sagala.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, if you guys might recall, when this came to us, uh, I don't know, six months ago or a while ago, this particular property located off of, off of Blackstone, between Blackstone and Ninety-Nine, north of, uh, of, uh, I wanna call it Knight Rider, but Knight Transportation, um, the property was up for, uh, there was a determination that it was surplus property, that we can sell it. The process required us to put it out there for any nonprofit that may wanna consider building affordable housing for that per-particular, uh, or that process. And now we have before us the, I believe there's no interest from anyone that, that I'm aware of that's interested in doing that. But at the time when we discussed it, I brought up the idea if, if there was a way for us to swap land with someone who wanted to buy it. Because, um, when I call this no man's land and, and it has no value, it has value for commercial, so if someone wants to build a gas station or whatever they can build on it, it's, it's commercial, but it has no value when it comes to housing, because there's no infrastructure and there's just a lot of work you would have to do to build. I mean, imagine putting some apartments there in the middle of what I would call nowhere, it's a commercial zone. So the idea was, could we require a swap if someone was interested in buying it? And from what I understand, the city manager sent me information that the va, the property's valued at a certain amount of prob, uh, certain value, that if, if whoever wanted to buy it said, hey, well, we'll swap it for you, but if you find us property within the city limits, that's of that similar value, maybe that's where we can kind of build some affordable housing. So, um, so I wanted to bring that up as, as something, I don't know if it's legal we can do or if it's someone has done that before. But my, uh, my thought is that it, it could be a great opportunity for us to generate some revenue and use it towards the idea of, of housing, affordable housing. But how do we get there? The city manager also given alternatives. Well, if council wants to, to sell it and whatever proceeds are from the sale, we can set that aside to try to build affordable housing. So there's different ways to get there. So that's kind of why I wanted to discuss it, to see if there was any, any, any more thought the city manager had or staff on the idea, because, I mean, it's, it's just the process to try to build affordable housing, but no one's gonna build it. I mean, our mayor knows where housing goes and I would imagine he would agree that.
Which, which you had said, and I think with legal council that we have is, we have a, a, says an action, which is to adopt a resolution, repealing resolution twenty-four sixty-five due to a clerical error. So what we have in front of us, and I think city attorney, is this action, which is limited towards, w-we already have an action that's been approved. We're trying to adopt a resolution repealing that resolution. So is that the action that we need to take first? And then what is, what are we limited to here next on declaring outside of APNs? The use or changing the, the direction of surplus property or so forth?
Uh, on this item, not, not a whole lot, because it's really just the clerical portion of it. So if you're gonna make a policy decision, it really needs to be its own item.
I was, uh. Can I vote on the, I, uh, December third was when this was handled and I was in Southern California. And, uh, didn't. I think it was December or was it January? I, I, I think it was December third. It may have been first, first meeting in January. Was it January? It was last year. Okay, I think it was December third. And I, I heard part of the presentation. The difficulty, and Mario, you could, you could clarify this, but. The difficulty with requiring. A potential buyer to buy other property for a swap, that's normally done. As part of, uh, what's called an Internal Revenue Code, section ten thirty-one exchange. For tax purposes. The city of Tulare is not worried about tax purposes. We, we can take whatever money we get from that sale and then utilize it for whatever purpose you want. The other problem, when we require somebody to go into title of property and then say, we'll then do a swap is. Once they go on title, they're potentially responsible for the circumstances, the hazardous waste and other. Potent, potential problems as it relates to that property itself. So the feasibility of getting a potential purchaser to take on that liability is really non-existent. So the idea, I understand what you're talking about. The practicality is, it's just not going to happen. So, I mean, the, the more prudent way is if we sell this property at a good price. We designate, you know, and the council wants to, then we designate that for a specific purpose. Or it goes back into the general fund to be used for whatever purpose is decided by staff as approved by council. Am I misstating that in any way, Mario?
I mean, it's more of a policy decision for the council. I mean. However, you want to, both ways are, are fine. They have, you know, their own complications, but however the council wants to handle that after the fact is fine.
I'm talking specifically about the probability of getting a third party to go buy other property and then come back and, and do.
Yeah, I mean, from a practical standpoint, they'd already have to have the property to, to be able to want to do a swap, but it would be very difficult to get somebody to buy a property. To then do a swap into this property.
Yeah.
So with that, the action, we could adopt a resolution repealing. We can adopt a resolution repealing resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-five. But this action says, and declaring approximately five acres of city-owned property as surplus. So we could do both actions or one.
Well, you'd want to do, you really need to do both, because you, the intent was to do both of them from. The, the prior resolution and you had the, the clerical error on there. Uh, and so declaring it, you're really re-declarating it surplus with, with the typographical error fixed.
So even if you denied it, it still declared surplus. There was just an A P N issue. So our issue in front of us is correct.
We legally have to.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
In order for us to comply with the Surplus Property Act, we have to take this action.
Does that extend deadlines?
Yes, so that's part of, that's part of the issue, right? So when we send these notices out. Declaring it surplus to the various agencies, we have to get the A P Ns correct. So that they don't say, well, I didn't get noticed because I didn't get the right A P Ns. So that's, that's the purpose of this.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to adopt. Adopt a resolution repealing resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-five due to a clerical error. Uh, as indicated in the report. And declaring approximately five acres of city-owned property located between K Street and Highway ninety-nine, just south of Commercial Avenue. Uh, with the A P Ns indicated in the recommendation. Uh, that property being declared surplus property pursuant to the government, government code section six five four zero two.
Second.
There's a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
But, uh, just a quick note, so the property. The buyer, we already know there's a buyer out there. So, so the property. We, I was surprised for coming to council, because I know that when I, from the last conversation, there was already a potential buyer for this.
Yeah, so, so there is a potential buyer. We've talked with them. Um, but. That, so, so we are not obligated to sell that property to anyone, right? You declared it surplus. We will bring back to you potential buyers. There was one party that reached out to us. Actually, two parties. One reached out to us, was willing to offer us less than a praise value. We weren't interested in that, so I didn't bring that to you. The second was a party who was willing to pray, uh, to offer a praise value, but they had no intention of developing it anytime in the foreseeable future. In fact. They may hold it and return around and resell it. And based on the conversation we've had in the past about the old R D A properties. Managements, even though we've not had an official vote to this effect, the management's perspective was. That you may be looking for something better than just somebody offering a fair market value. You may be looking for somebody who's going to buy at a fair market value and actually develop it, create jobs, pay property taxes. So our intention is, after this goes through the process, if it complies, we apply with the, the surplus act. If there's no affordable group that wants to buy the property. We go ahead and list the property for sale in the market and bring you any and all offers.
And I, I just want to reiterate the point. That you had said is, there's already a policy and process of surplus property that needs to go through nonprofits, affordable house, whatever that might mean. We have a process that that has to be done first and then.
State law.
State law, exactly. Okay. I want to move forward then to. Uh, bef, well, first, before we move to item ten, public hearing, did have a request to go back for public comment. We have Donette Carter, our C E O of our chamber. And, uh, not just for her, but I've, others have public comment too. I want to go back and I'll open public comment. And then Madam Clerk, I'll start first. Do we have someone on the phone that would like to give public comment?
Donette?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Isherwood and members of council. Thank you for getting past this little technical difficulty tonight. Uh, this is Donette Silva Carter. Representing the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much to. City council and our city manager and our police chief and the entire team. Of city staff that worked on the T biz event, as well as, of course, most important, the building itself. This is definitely a monumental. Effort on behalf of so many partners and we've received a lot of positive response. We already have businesses contacting us who want to get into Tbiz. And so we'll look forward to providing regular reports to city council. So again, thank you so much. We also want to remind everyone that we have the state of the city and county event happening on August the twenty-second. We look forward to having the opportunity to showcase what is happening in our city and in our county areas. Connected to Tulare. And then on a final item on eleven point two, as I'm unable to be able to be there in person and to call back. I just wanted to say that the Chamber of Commerce is very excited at the potential for. A restaurant development incentive program in the downtown area. We've been very impressed with the aggressive approach that has been taken for economic development in the last few years. And this type of incentive program. Actually feeds right into what we're looking for, for the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Donette. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to make public comment? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. And we'll move on to item ten, public hearing. Comments related to public hearing items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by council. As before with public comments. If you are, uh. Viewing or listening to this meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine for public comments. And the city clerk will assist you. So item ten point one, placing public improvement loans on the tax roll, uh, Mr. Roberts.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and members of the council. Uh, this item recommends adoption of a resolution to place costs associated with connection of properties to the city's water and or wastewater systems. Um, and with construction of sidewalks, gutters, pavements, driveways and curves on, on existing improved properties within the city on, uh, the, the property tax rolls. Uh, this action is in accordance with the provisions of Streets and Highways Code, section fifty-eight seventy. Uh, adopted by the board and a public utility commissioner, utilities commissioners and city council in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, and provides for the financing and repayment of certain public works related costs to be assessed against property owners and placed on the property tax rolls. The city has entered into agreements with nine property owners to construct and finance connections. Primarily to city water service, sewer services and to place those costs on property tax rolls and annual installments. A public hearing is required prior to sending of the assessments to Tulare County. To allow anyone objecting and or wanting to address the city council on the assessments to do so.
Okay, any others? Items or does that conclude your?
That's it.
Okay. So with that, with staff's presentation, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to make public comment on the item ten point one, placing public improvement loans on tax roll? Do we have anyone on the, do we have anyone on the phone, Madam Clerk? Okay, so with that, good evening, welcome. No, yes, good evening.
Hi, counsel and staff, Adrian Herrera. Um, I was part of a real estate transaction probably five years ago, uh, where they were putting. This was Pace or Hero Loans, where they were financing these energy efficiency type deals on people's property. Um. I just want to make sure, like, when, when I went to sell that property, it was, it was astonishing, the cost. Um, that the contractors who did the work bid up compared to what was, should have been a normal cost. So I guess, I don't know how this is working, but as you guys were talking, this nightmare scenario popped up in my head, but hopefully they're getting. You know, other bids for getting full disclosure of what that's really costing them and. On the real estate side, when they transfer it, of course, they'll find out through title that there's some stuff there, but. Just give them an opportunity to know what they're signing up for, um, and the full cost to shop. That's all.
Thank you. If I may, these costs are indicated in the resolution. Uh, they range from, uh. I think the low is four hundred and four dollars up to fifteen hundred dollars. On, on the costs that we're talking.
Just the permit fee is what we're talking about?
The actual improvements. This isn't, this isn't pace. Uh, this is not like putting solar energy efficiency improvements, it's like putting sidewalks and.
Got it.
Public, yeah.
Okay.
Much smaller program.
Yeah, thank you.
Council members, any other questions? Thank you. With no other, uh. Individuals in chamber wishing to speak and no one on the phone, I'll close the public hearing. And then open it up, council members, if you have questions. Okay, seeing none, council, do we have an action?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution placing costs associated with. Connect, connection of existing improved properties to the city's water and or. Wastewater systems and the construction of sidewalks, gutters, pavements, driveways and curbs. On existing improved properties within the city on property tax rules in installments.
Second.
Okay, motion in second for item ten point one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five oh. Moving forward, public hearings, ten point two, Zone Amendment seven six two, T M C. Tulare Municipal Code ten point three eight, Historic Cultural Landmarks Ordinance. And with that, uh, Mario and I.
Good evening, Mayor, pleasure, Mayor, council. This item, um, is a cleanup item. It actually, a little bit of, of the summary. On October first, twenty twenty-four, city council adopted resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-five. That in, in effect, uh, was a kickstart of the city's historic preservation planning program. And there were a number of action items that were adopted as part of that resolution. This is one of those items, which was for staff as well as. Your city's Historic Cultural Landmarks Head House Committee to review the existing, um, ordinance that, that's currently in the city code. And see if there's any, anything that needs to be revised, uh, to implement, to be able to implement the program. And so upon that review by staff and by the committee and subsequently by the commission. Uh, only minor revisions were deemed necessary. The ordinance was well-written a number of years ago. Uh, by, um, and adopted by council. And it really lays out a process, and that's what this historic preservation program is, is it's a process. It doesn't. It's, you know, there's different ways that folks can, um. Either nominate the property to be a landmark. Uh, or, you know, as we've seen, sometimes people will pursue demolition. Regardless of anywhere in that spectrum that a property is affected. We need to have a process on the books in terms of public hearings and different steps that need to be taken. And that's what's outlined in this ordinance. So in effect, the only revisions that were required to be made were clarification of terms. Uh, since we are using the term historic cultural landmark that was replaced throughout. And then there was a section towards the back that was eliminated, uh, based on the old zoning code. That outlines specific uses. That require a conditional use permit, and I think the intent of that was some of the older. Uh, residential properties that are used as businesses, like you can think of like Hazel's, for example. Um, or a law office going into an older building. There was a process in the past when you went through a conditional use permit to be able to, to do that. Um, staff feels that is redundant. Because, uh, this, our zoning ordinance already regulates uses. And if we want to encourage folks to occupy these, uh, properties. Anything regarding their, the historic context is already covered by the ordinance. Um, and the zoning code already has certain uses require conditional use permits. Those are permitted by right. So those are the only revisions that staff deem necessary. But I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, as this passed to, the recommended action is for pass the print, this ordinance. For Zone Amendment seven sixty-two that's in front of you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mario. So with conclusion of staff's presentation, I will open the public hearing. For ten point two, Zone Amendment seven six two of Tulare Municipal Code ten thirty-eight, Historical Cultural Landmarks Ordinance. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak on, in this public hearing? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? Okay? So with. With that, I will close the public hearing on ten point two. Council members, do we have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, the only, uh, question I had, I had talked to, uh, Mario, I'm not sure if I talked to Mark about it, but, uh. The one thing I asked, uh, Mario was, were murals considered sort of. Under this, under this ordinance, would, would a mural fall under that because it's an older mural, because it's on an older building? Um, and I brought it up in the context that the planning commission, uh, was meeting last week, approved the. Uh, conditional use permit for a dance hall, restaurant, bar at the old J C Penney's building, where the, uh, murals are set. Um, and the planning commission didn't, uh, really inquire, at least in my estimation, a little bit more about the mural. Other than get the assurance that the, the tenant, uh, was not going to paint over it. Uh, I mean, they painted the building already. It looks nice. They painted the building, but. What's to stop them inadvertently from painting a mural, covering it up, you know, by mistake or whatever? And so I had asked if there was any, anything in place to protect a mural or any mural. Uh, that might be considered historical. And unfortunately, there's nothing in place at this point, from what I understand. So I had asked if there was any way to incorporate something like that in this, or it would have to be a separate ordinance.
Uh, thank you, um, Councilman Sagala. So I did further research after our conversation on Friday afternoon. So as I had mentioned previously, we do have, so it's covered in a number of ways, the. If the building itself, or let's say the mural itself as an object is considered a historic cultural landmark, it would garner protection under the ordinance in front of you now. There's also a mural ordinance in the city's code that deals with murals, mostly. Um, what goes into, to approving a mural. There's also the city's signed permit program. Um, but at the end of the day, we do have a California Civil Code. Um, which protects the rights of artists that painted the murals, and so it really just, again, a lot of these things are about processes. Someone, and it's just to protect and ensure there's a process. So let's say, um, there is a mural on a building. And there's, um, a public, public benefit to saving it, and it can be saved. Uh, California Civil Code establishes a process to allow an artist to have their work preserved. Even if, um, whether it's to, to be moved to another location, for example. Um, and so it just outlines that process. So it is already covered even, uh, under the civil code, um, in that instance. In this particular scenario, uh, the, as has been done with a few of the other murals downtown. The applicant, um, is proposing to touch up the mural so that you can see it. Not, uh, modify it, not paint over it. And so that is why the, the planning commission, uh, didn't seem to have any concerns, or staff for that matter.
I'd, I'd agree with what Mr. Sagala indicated. You know, at least we ought to consider the possibility, and that, again, that would be in the form of a future agenda item, but consider the possibility. Of having, um, some procedure to put the. Of having some procedure to put the owner of the property on notice. But that mural is protected, because what usually happens in the type of situation that was indicated is that. Late in the afternoon, maybe three, four o'clock on a Friday, the painters come in. And they go to work eliminating what could be an issue, and by the time somebody recognizes it, it's Monday. And and it's gone, so that would be. The rules may be there, but the practicality of dealing with it is something entirely different.
Yeah, because at this point, what I understood from the planning commission. Watching the planning commission meeting and and your our conversation was that. Right now, it's in the hands of the woman that that came and I guess is not the building owner, but the tenant. It's basically her word, it says, I'm not going to touch that mural. And so my my concern is that. Is there a process, I mean, yeah, there's a California, there's a state law, but oftentimes when there's a state law, a municipality. Puts in their own sort of protections as well, and I think that. What I gather is that we don't have one locally to protect that, so if it if it requires us in the future coming with the agenda item. But that is just my only worry, as as Mr. Madero said, hey, inadvertently or on purpose, whatever. Happens at four o'clock, we're going to get a community cause all weekend. But then we're in a situation like that, building got torn down, we couldn't do anything about it.
So we can certainly bring back the mural ordinance to include such language specific for the city.
Yeah, I think I think that would be a council decision if they wanted us to bring that, they would.
Or I'm hearing here in the discussion, kind of like what we have here. Is the existing historic preservation ordinance, we're cleaning up, and that would be distributed, we have a historical cultural landmark. Ad hoc committee that facilitates that that that. Can come, the the nexus as it relates same to this and ties back to also the murals. Could be handled or at least communicated the same way through that pathway, meaning. When a group, there was only so many murals on so many buildings, and they're going to go through that process. The same way this would be handled, that could be communicated as well, our mural. You have a mural in this building and.
Yeah, I would I would. It'd be ultimately council's decision, but my recommendation would be if you support this item, you adopt this tonight, if you want to discuss murals in the future, we can certainly. Set that up as a separate discussion, and if you wanted to deal with murals, I would recommend you deal with that in the mural ordinance, not part of this order.
But it gives us the opportunity to raise that issue. Now, let's take a look at it in the future, in that regard, unless there's other comments, I'd make a motion to adopt. To to pass to print the ordinance approving zone. Amendment seven sixty two repealing and reenacting chapter ten point three eight as recommended. Of the Tulare Municipal Code as recommend as the recommended action.
We have a motion in second on ten point two. Any other discussion? With that, council all in favor? Any opposed? Ten point two is approved. Moving forward on ten point three. Historical cultural landmark nomination for Tulare First United Methodist Church, Mario Naya.
Thank you again, Mayor, this item is for a specific historic cultural landmark nomination. And as the PowerPoint here is pulled up, I will go ahead and get started. So the request is actually, this is the first reading, potential first reading, so it's pass to print an ordinance approving zone amendment seven sixty three. And so that item is a request by John Jones to designate the Tulare First United Methodist Church to. As a city of Tulare Historic Cultural Landmark and added to the local register of historic cultural landmarks. This property is located at two twenty eight West Kern Avenue, and it is currently zoned R one four. So Tulare First United Methodist Church, the church's founding actually goes back and mirrors that really of the city of Tulare. It was officially incorporated a few years after that in eighteen eighty three. And it was originally a small one story wood frame building, complete with a thirty foot steel bell tower. It is the second oldest church in the city of Tulare. The current church, church, which is what you see on the building and is the nomination in front of you this evening, was built between nineteen twelve and thirteen. And designed by Walker and Water of Los Angeles, fairly prominent architects of their time. Several of the architectural features of the church, it is developed in an Italian Renaissance style of architecture, it includes. Twenty five decorated lead glass windows, eighteen memorial stained glass windows. The dome, impressive dome on this church is unique, is a unique design at Tulare, but really to the region as well. The sanctuary was once the largest auditorium in town, so a number of community and civic events were held in that space. There was a seventeen rank Austin pipe organ that was added in nineteen twenty one. It was replaced in nineteen sixty nine, and it is still the largest pipe organ in the city of Tulare, you can see a picture of it there. There've been several minor alterations over the years, but nonetheless, they have not detracted from. The important architectural features of this church, not to mention. The notable history the church has played in the development and in the history of the city of Tulare. Fairly notable families, including that of Bob Mathias. Tex Rankin had, I believe, had funeral services here as well, so it's it's really been. One of those centerpieces, one of those community pillars throughout the history of Tulare and.
Don't leave out our our current vice man, his fans. Parishioners of this church.
That is very true, I wanted to leave some room for other, I think we have a couple of gentlemen who might say a few words, and so. I know we have a long agenda, so I was keeping my presentation brief, but yes, notable families, both historically and to the current day. Absolutely, this project proposal is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Act. Pursuant to section one five one eight three. I'm actually, I'm sorry, I think I skipped, oh gosh, I have to go back. Sorry about that, Melissa, I was trying to go, yeah, there we go, I skipped over just a planning commission summary. So this was, this item was heard on July fourteen twenty twenty five. By the City of Slurry Planning Commission who voted unanimously five oh to recommend designation. Of the Tulare First United Methodist Church as a historic cultural landmark to the city council. And that finding was based on the architectural significance, which I shared a little bit of. As well as the important role that the church and its congregation have played in Tulare's history and cultural heritage. And that concludes my presentation, the staff is looking. For motion, the recommendation would be a pass to print of ordinance approving zone amendment seven sixty three. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mario, so with conclusion of staff presentation, I will open the public hearing for ten point three. Is there anyone in the council chambers that wishes to speak on this item? Good evening, Chris, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, everyone, Chris Harold Tulare, member of your cultural historic cultural landmarks advisory committee. And as part of that committee, I just wanted to mention that the committee as a whole was thoroughly pleased and excited about. Bringing this particular nomination through the process as we looked at the the pictures and and all of the information. When you think about the the congregational church, which was registered as a landmark earlier this year, is a perfect example of a. Style of old style church, New England, old New England style church, the Methodist Church is a perfect example of. The echoes of the. Majestic cathedrals in Europe with that Italian Renaissance style where people come from all over to just really marvel at. The unique design and how it was structured and 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 built, and it holds true with this church itself. Especially with the the dome itself and that construction, which Mario talked about, which is just so so unique. And while the church may not have tourists from all over the world come to marvel at it, they do have anybody that comes from around this area. To attend that church for particular reasons, they do sit there and just marvel at. That and wonder how that was built a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve years ago. That church has been a part of the Tulare skyline for a hundred and twelve years. And because it is so large and and imposing in a good way, you can see it from many vantage points throughout the city. And on a personal note for myself, I hold it, this particular nomination very dear to my heart because I'm a member of the church. And was raised in the church since I was a kid. And so I can definitely attest to being in that church and just sitting there and just feeling. The sense of not only the sacred space that all churches have, but the sense of history behind that church as well. Considering what how Mario mentioned that in the past, it also had served as the largest auditorium. For the city, so it was a focal point for the entire town itself and not just the parishioners of the church. So again, we're very excited to be able to bring this to you and another perfect example of our history. For the city of Tulare, thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, my name is John Jones. I'm actually part of the reason we're here, I got this application submitted for good reason. I don't know how many of you other than Steve has been in the Methodist Church in a while, but it's still very unique, still very hollow space. And it is very interesting, there's a, an amazing picturesque. Stained glass windows throughout, and when the sun's out, they're quite beautiful, it's like they're lit. I'm I'm a member of that church, shoot, I got married in that church forty plus years ago, different hairdo then, but. Right, you know what I'm saying? But but it's a very unique invite, all of you to come and catch a sermon there. We have the pipe organ still blows. It's well maintained, well tuned. There's been a lot of famous funerals in that church, a lot of people gotten married in that church from this. Tulare area, especially years back, and. Again, would like to see you guys come to a service, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak on this item, Mr. Jones? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? Sorry, I will close the public hearing on item ten point three, council members, any questions, comments? Statements?
Can we defer to the vice mayor to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Madera. Adopt an ordinance, or is it pass to print?
Yes.
Okay, adopt ordinance approve to pass print approving zone amendment seven sixty three. Designating Tulare First United Methodist Church property as a city of Tulare Historic Cultural Landmark and adding it to the local register. Of historic cultural landmarks pursuant to Tulare Municipal Code chapter ten point three eight as described here in.
And I will second that motion. And with that, council, all in favor? Any opposed? Ten point three is approved. Thank you for coming. Thank you for the application submission. All right, moving forward to item eleven, general business. We have eleven point one, healthcare presentation request. Discuss and provide staff direction regarding a future presentation by local healthcare providers, Mr. Mondell.
Yes, this, you'll recall, was a prior item brought forward by council member Segala. Staff's just looking for your direction in terms of what exactly you'd be looking for us, you know, who are we inviting, is it every? Healthcare provider, large and small, is it only those within the city limits? Is it, you know, what specifically are we asking them to present and be prepared to present, how long should we tell them their presentation should be planned for? It's those types of questions we're looking for direction on.
Yes, thank you, I think those are some important projects, as mentioned, I bring it forward because. There has been some concerns about healthcare access and impacts. From the recent federal legislation that was signed in Washington, cutting funds here and there. And so the idea was to invite Kewee Delta, invite Adventist Health, invite Family Healthcare Network, Altura. Any other health organizations that provide services to the community. To share with us what they feel will be the impacts, are some of these rural clinics or hospitals jeopardized? In jeopardy of closing, we've been hearing from Kewee. Prior to the legislation being signed, that there was some concerns about Kewee closing. So the CEO has been public, it's been in the paper, so this would be an idea for them to maybe have a half hour presentation. Each one gets five, ten minutes or whatever, say, you know, based on our research. This is the impact that could occur to our facility and your residents. And just so that people have an understanding, you know, what may be coming down the road, I do know that they have been looking at this for many, many months. Each one of them and Mr. and our mayor could attest, that those clinics hire are part of lobbyist groups. That under that keep an eye on these type of legislations, so they probably already know what impacts may occur. Especially since the bill's been signed, so that's kind of what I was looking for, for the opportunity for us to invite them, I know that. Adventists has come here in the past to talk about what kind of services they provide. We've had Kewee here, I believe, as well, we've had the CEO come to council, and I know we've had a a number of them, so. So that would be the goal is for us to invite them, they could or don't have to come, but let's facilitate a presentation that. Maybe about thirty minutes would be my guess.
Councilmember Segala, you're saying that you named four so far health providers, if we go and do research, there may be more than that, but we want. Each of them to come on the same night to do a ten minute presentation on the same topic.
Excuse me, yes, I think there's difference, I mean, I think there's a difference between running a hospital and a clinic, I mean, and. Some of these are FHQC's that deal with rural communities, some don't, so I think they may have shared. Concerns and unique obstacles, so I think, you know. Invite them all, and if they want to come, I'd be happy to listen to them, but that's, that was the goal of this item, just for us to listen from our healthcare providers. Because I do know that when we shop and market the city, one of the key points besides us having great schools is having access to healthcare. That was the whole point of us saving the hospital years ago, because it makes our community a lot better, and so I'm concerned that. There may be something that happens to to our healthcare providers in the future.
So. I think putting forward. A little bit of a different perspective on it, and perhaps to present to you of a different outcome. Is with this and my support with this item is more of a state of healthcare in the city of Tulare. I think all the groups that are mentioned, Altura, Kewee, Family Healthcare Network, Altura, are all part of a collaborative membership group. Whose name I had with me and I don't have it with me at this current moment, but they are all part of a regional. Collaboration and that a representative from that collaboration come. And more to the point of what's the status of health in the city of Tulare, we've had measles outbreaks in the county. What's the status of healthcare, what are perhaps three to five key health issues in the city? I think the outcome from that and the objective to that is. As a matter of what are issues and related healthcare issues that fam that FQHCs are doing? I think it could touch on also rural health clinics and also our major. Adventist Health mainly related to the city of Tulare, and of course, healthcare is a regional, state and federal issue, but touches on more. Of that issue that informs council as it's germane towards our residents and others, what's going on currently in the city. The part that I caution with, that I don't necessarily know if it needs to be said, but to clarify, is the of the presentation and elements being used. Or being interpreted and moving forward into a political discussion. That it's going to be a debate on federal legislations, debate that says who voted on what. And the conversation or the perception of that will be taken away from what's the status of healthcare in the city of Tulare. Amongst the topics that I think mutually be shared, but that regional group would have a good handle on them. What's the top three to five issues, what does healthcare look like in the city, what does that mean for our community? And yes, which facts are facts, then what does that look like for the status of HQHCs or the hospital? I think as that group presents. Those facts and perhaps related to legislation or medical reimbursements, I think that group would touch on it in appropriate way. And that was when I voted to support this of more of a mission purpose and outcomes from it. I would say that that could be done in under a ten minute presentation and allow for some Q and A, that's mine.
Well, I I do appreciate that thought, and I mean, it spans more than what I was considering, I mean, I wasn't talking about. Well, I do appreciate that thought, and I mean, it spans more than what I was considering. I mean, I wasn't talking about. How many people got measles or COVID still alive or is the bird flu down the street? I wasn't really talking about that kind of stuff, but more about the impact. I mean, there's ten people in the audience. Statistically, half of those people, if I cut it this way or that way, are on Medicare. Fifty-four percent of Tulare residents, county are on Medicare. And I would venture to say that almost sixty percent of everybody, six out of ten people that live in Tulare have Medicare. And so I'm not asking for Mr. Valadell or Mr. Fong to come and tell us why you voted for the bill or didn't vote for the bill. All I'm asking is what is that impact? What is that going to look like for our residents if they all continue? If now six out of those ten people lose their Medicare, what is that going to create a crisis in our city? Is Altura going to be able to handle the load? Is Kuya Adventist? So I was looking more on that kind of higher level, but not specific if, you know, someone down the street got measles or not. I mean, that's okay, we want to do that. But I was looking more like, hey, there is a real chance that Adventist may close. Or there is a real chance that Altura may go out of business. I don't know. That's what I like to hear from Graciela. That's what I like to hear from the, you know, the people at Adventist. Are we going to survive that bill or not? That's basically what I was looking for.
At this state, I think you have two very different perspectives of this and open if other council members have comments on it.
I understood it when there was a consensus and I listened that Mr. Segala presented this initially. That it was going to come before us for informational purposes to provide. A parameter or a concept of what the effects would be from the federal legislation. And perhaps if we had a special meeting. With the four that have been mentioned to have a brief presentation on what's going to happen. It would be informational to us and would also be informational to the community. So I'm not adverse to providing that information to the community under the circumstances. If they're willing to come and staff will have to make a determination as to. Will there be four? Are they requesting or five? Are they requesting fifteen minutes apiece? Is it something shorter and fit it into basically what it is we're looking for? So from that standpoint, now that we have those specifics. As long as there, we make the request, they have to decide whether they want to come or not come. And it, from an informational standpoint, I don't think it would be. A waste of our time or a waste of the public's time. As long as what you said, Mr. Mayor. As long as it doesn't turn into a political slugfest. I mean, we want information on what the effects are, not the political consequences under the circumstances.
Yeah, I, and I know the other council members, the, the part. That I think. That I would agree with is that there's a difference between health status. And something that may or may not happen eighteen months, twenty-four months when it's enacted at that point in time. So I, I think the part that I'm cautious about is the conversation as though it's taking place right now. But that conversation of that, if it's a policy conversation and a policy implementation. Is informational based off. Speculation timeframe or the professionals can share that. Compared to, I felt the conversation that even though outbreaks, issues, what is. Current in front of us, health issues in the community are important to know. So we invite the groups and we come in. If that's the objective to share. That status of healthcare, how it would be impacted and its implementation longevity. If that's the, the path that we want to have in that presentation or guide people to do, I like the part. Not that I'm sole part of a presentation model or a special meeting and let the groups present on their topics. Sounds good because I think you would get different perspectives. Compared to the different perspectives, why I mentioned the regional group is they're all members of that regional group and they all participate in it. And I thought perhaps then that, that group could then decide who comes or so forth and so on. But totally open to what you said, I'm just caution of if it's a blend or if it's one presentation over the other.
And they could decide how they want to present, whether they want to do it individually. Or they want to do it through the group that you indicated. Would that be, did you have any?
I could certainly discuss this with each of them. It's, it's, you know, and I don't know. You know, maybe some who are willing to participate, some who may not, they may be, I mean, just to be realistic, there may be some, for example, that'll say, well. You know. I'm not sure who to send to address that, right? We don't have the chief CEO that's available, so I'm going to send the CFO. And the CFO, you know, he might talk more, he or she may talk more about the financial implications to the organization versus somebody else talking about. You know, more of the, the medical implications of the, so I just want council to be aware that it's. We'll do our best to address what I'm hearing is shaping up in terms of your objectives, which is, I just can't promise that we'll get, deliver those results.
Well, I think.
What they present. I think first, and I've commented and I know Segala commented, is there a consensus to what councilman Madero said though? Reach out to the group, their things and how they want to bring that presentation. So it didn't, it didn't X out what I said and it didn't X out Segala what you had offered. I, I think what he's saying, are we in consensus to that?
No, I mean, I, I agree and I appreciate Mr. Madero's framing it. I mean, I agree with him. But I also would recommend if we wanted to really focus on the status of, of whatever ailments are out there. Then we could include the new county health officer. I mean, I think she's probably the best person in. Even out of all these presentations to tell us there's X amount of this happening in. Lindsay, X amount happening in Dinuba, down in Erdymo, wherever. So I would recommend we invite the, the health officer if we want a general. The idea of what the mayor talked about, like, hey, there's measles, there's COVID, there's other things that we could talk about.
And then only other comment I would have for council, I'm so sorry, I know there's other, I mean, please.
No, I'm just asking if there's any rebuttal or other thoughts with that. Would, I think what councilman Madero said, which seems Segala and I both agree with as well. You're both.
The vice mayor sat on the hospital district board, so he has. Acute knowledge of all of this that's, that I know I don't have. I'm interested in his position as it relates to this.
I think of all those organizations that have been named, I think they would be willing to. Respond and present, give us a presentation of either. Certainly of the health issues going on in the county right now. I'm a little bit concerned about asking them to essentially. Delve into the thought process of the federal governments and their passing the bill. That's going to affect all this, whether they would actually want to come out in public and say that this was. Whatever, you know, I just don't know if they'd be willing to do that. And I don't know if the average, like, I don't think a board member would be able to understand it. And like city manager said, it might end up being CFO that shows up. To, to say what it's going, what the impact going to be. I think what councilman Segala is really getting to is, is it going to affect? People here in Tulare, our constituents that are on Medicare that we have to be concerned about. I don't think they'll be able to give us an answer really at this point.
Well, they're the ones that won't be able to tell us.
Give us some idea, yes.
The other comment I would just have would be, because I know. These are the comments I might hear from them. I, I do imagine some of them may be a little bit concerned to, to, to the vice mayor's point. You know, because we're asking them to look into a crystal ball a little bit and the, the things. The things they could say could be taken out of context on social media or in the media. People could overreact to the things they say, so there may be a lot of reservation. I'm just speculating, just as you are. The reason I'm pointing that out is because I could see some of them asking me, what is the intended outcome? Is the city looking to be a, a problem solver and help us work through these issues? And help fund deficits if there are. I, obviously you haven't said anything that yet, so I'm going to say no. That's not what we're looking to do, but I just want you to be aware, there may be some expectations of them too. So I will try to do my best to convey to you what they're conveying to me. So that if it's steering in the wrong direction, you can help re-guide me to get me back on the right path with them.
If I may, Mark, you can keep us surprised in our weekly report as to what you're finding out. And then, and then we, we can, as a, as a group, indicate a consensus as to where we go from there.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm okay. So I think from what I understand is that we will give the city manager direction to put together. What's the best way to get this information, reach out to some of the groups and folks we talked about? And the goal is just to present the impacts as best they know them. On what the legislation could impact the health, the status of healthcare in Tulare. And then to the mayor's point, maybe invite the Tulare County Health Officer, Public Health Officer to talk about. What other, I guess, medical issues or things are happening in the county.
I, I think what my, what I'm going to steer for, just so you know, is. I suspect as I have a conversation with each of them about it, hopefully I can get to the right person. They will probably say something like, well, given who you're inviting and giving what you're asking, I think it's best if we speak to this issue. And the next party will say, I'll speak to this other issue and then maybe we'll get the whole picture if they each grab a piece of the puzzle perhaps.
I mean, that's however that works, but I think, I think it would be something worth our time to do.
If you, if you need help with the CEOs, names and phone numbers have that and can get that to you.
Yes, that would be helpful to me and I'm sure Tom is who I'm going to ask, ask to help me with this project as well.
Let me have that information.
Okay, so I guess we don't, I guess we don't need a motion then, as city attorneys, it just, that's the direction?
Yeah, I, I. For what the mayor, I mean, for what the city manager summarized, yes, I, I think there's consensus with it. Okay.
I understand.
Moving forward to eleven point two downtown restaurant incentive program. Mr. Mondell.
Yes, council. So I have mentioned to you and some of you in the past, I think all of you in the past, that, you know, there's a number of things we need to do downtown. If we want downtown to be successful, remember we have to have people living downtown, working downtown. Eating downtown, recreating and entertaining downtown. We're working on all of those pieces sort of simultaneously. We've implemented some really good projects so far and we need to do a lot more. And so we were waiting on the time for when would it make sense to bring you a restaurant type incentive program. You remember last, over the last couple of years with the ARPA funds, we did the downtown building rehabilitation grant program. And that program was focused on essentially, not in every case, but largely taking vacant spaces. And bringing those buildings up to code so that they're now not only safe, right? Because when you have buildings, especially older buildings in downtowns that are not up to code, they don't meet the fire code and. The energy code, the accessibility code, the earthquake code, they're liabilities. And they can, something could happen in those buildings and it could impact other buildings around them. And so we did a few grants through that program and all of those buildings have been upgraded, which has been fantastic. This program might be a little bit different. I've been waiting to bring it at the right time. And for me, the right time is when we have enough interest from the private sector and wanting to do some restaurants downtown. So the, the, we've talked to a few people, there's some existing restaurants that are thinking about expanding. There's a few folks that are talking about bringing a restaurant downtown. I mentioned one project in particular because there's a timing issue involved in their project, which is. And, and the, the, the owners of the property are here with us this evening. Adrian Herrera and his family have invested, as you know, in the Tap Yard project. They were one of our previous recipients of the grant program. They and several other investors or partners are looking at doing a project. At the property located at two fifteen East Kern Avenue. And they were, they were proceeding on that project really without seeking any incentives to make the project work. I've shared a little bit with you about it before, it would be a container. Project where they bring in several different types of containers and convert those into usable space with restaurants and. Other functions and sort of around a central outdoor seating area. And you've seen these types of projects pop up in cities all around the country. They had gone through the planning commission and seeked approval there. They're working through the city's permitting process. They have the property secured, as I understand it, under an option with the current property, or they were looking to close on the property. And one of the things they didn't realize was when they did their Tap Yard project, SCE had some rules and regulations affecting the installation of. Electric and gas, and there were some programs where they would offer rebates and or refunds or. An incentive for installing that type of work and that program ended. And so now they're having to install that out without any kind of rebate or incentive from SCE. And so they're seeing an additional cost to their project in the range of about two hundred and forty-five thousand. And they have conveyed to us that would make that project financially infeasible. And so when they brought it to our attention, for me, this was the time to move this incentive program forward. Now, I want to be very clear, we are not recommending that we give them a grant. This program, what we're presenting to you this evening is, it's, I'm, it's not about their project. I'm only using their project to explain to you that this was one of the reasons why we're bringing it to you for consideration. Now, if you ultimately decided to move forward with a program like this. We would need to bring you back the entire, you know, program guidelines and rules and regulations, which. Our thing would be very similar to what we did with the building rehabilitation grant program. But there'd be a few differences. One, obviously, we don't have ARPA funds. So we would be looking at the use of general fund surplus dollars. We were thinking about a million dollars allocated over two years. That doesn't mean we need to spend two million dollars. It depends on many applications we get and it depends on the dollar amount that they're seeking. You'll recall in the previous program, we, and it would also be the same in this program. They have to be the lion's share of the money in. We're only providing a small portion of dollars. And that's the way we'll always recommend on projects is that the taxpayer money is not the lion's share. It's a small portion of dollars compared to their overall investment. When we talk about restaurants, we'll, we want to think about in our minds a little bit about bringing a diversity of restaurants, right? So imagine if you had, you know, ten burger joints downtown, right? That's not the same impact if you had ten restaurants that offered authentic cuisine. Culturally based cuisine from all over the world, right? So you, you would have a bigger draw probably if you had a much, much greater variety of restaurant in terms of their cuisine. In terms of the restaurant type, some of them might be more fine dining, sit-down restaurants, some might be more like this one where it's an outdoor experience. Right? So we would be recommending that there's a variety. When we look at it, we're not looking to try to compete with some of our existing restaurants. We're looking to bring something new that complements the existing restaurants. The program in our minds would be available to existing restaurants, again, if they wanted to expand. The original building real, building real, building rehabilitation grant program was really putting money into the buildings. This one might have to be a little different. It could go into the buildings and the reason why that's a benefit is. Because you have to remember not, those business uses, whatever we put the money into are not always going to be there, right? They may change from time to time, but if the money's in the building, that stays on the tax rolls and it keeps the building marketable. This program might be a little bit different. If we go with this program, it, it could go into the building, but it probably end up going into more. Equipment, right? So fixed assets, but not necessarily infrastructure. So sometimes some of those fixed assets, assets like ovens and things like that. It's, it's, it doesn't necessarily show up on the property tax roll the same way as physical improvements might show up. So I just want you to be mindful of that. When we think about return on investment. This prop, this approach for restaurants probably doesn't have as strong. And as quick as a return on investment in our dollars, whereas the old program, we were seeing most of those projects generating a return within about five years. This project would probably take longer than that, but it's, the goal's a little bit different. The goal would be focused on bringing restaurants and bringing variety because that would bring people to downtown. So all we're looking for you, from you tonight is whether or not you support this concept. If you support this concept and obviously direction, if you say, well, I like this, but try to incorporate this approach or that approach. Then we would go back and work on that. Our goal would be to bring it back to you at the next council meeting, August nineteenth. The individuals that I've mentioned already, my understanding in them in particular, they would, they would be interested in applying. I don't know if they would qualify depending on what your rules are. They are under a timeframe in terms of the option that they've purchased on the property. It's delayed, this issue has delayed their closing. And so if you have no interest in the program. My understanding is they may end up walking away from their project. If you have an interest, I think their interest enough, they can speak for themselves. But I think their desire is to, can you continue to go down this path as long as council's showing an interest? But I think their desire is to, can you continue to go down this path as long as council's showing an interest in doing this? So that completes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Before, before public, uh, comment, can we ask some questions, Mr.?
Yeah, I was going to kind of go in our, our order. I was going to start with the vice mayor and then I can come over your way. There's some perks with the title, right? So I'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
I'll, I'll allow Mr. Madera to go first.
The man from Tennessee is deferred to the man in the fourth district, so yeah.
Uh, just clarification, I, I know in the other program that we had, there was a recognition that, that we can have a program, but we can't have a gift of taxpayer dollars. Um, and that's why basically the other program was an offset of sales tax dollars that we anticipated that we were going to receive, which I understood that.
Yes.
Uh, I don't see the similarity here. Because the, you know, for instance, we've got two hundred forty five thousand dollars here. Are we investing in, in an asset and then going to be as we receive sales tax dollars to offset, are we going to do something similar?
Yes, yes, a hundred percent in my, from my perspective, yes, it is similar. The difference is the return is going to probably take longer in this program than in the prior program. Most of our
So it'll be similar to what, for instance, the Rancho Brazil thing, where we knew we were investing, we knew there was risks there. But we wanted to make that into a venue that if that wasn't successful, someone else could come in and continue and give us our sales tax dollars as we anticipate.
Hundred percent.
And this is going to be somewhat
Very similar, just I would imagine that we would probably see, like, I'll give you an example, in the Tap Yard project. They had a greater diversity of potential income streams for the city, right? They had the sales tax revenue that's going to come from the Tap Yard component, the bar, food, beverage area. Of ultimately, they were working towards having residential units that could pay T O T tax revenue. So the more diversified revenue stream uh, and and depending on the nature of those revenue streams, we might get a faster return or slower return. In this case, you're talking just sales tax. I mean, property tax, yes. But the biggest one's going to be the sales tax revenue, but it's going to take us probably, I'm just guessing, we haven't done any R O Is because I don't, I haven't looked at the project yet. But my, my experience tells me that we probably, instead of a five-year return, would be looking more like at a ten-year return.
But we'd have, we, we'd still have this secured.
Yes.
Uh, it'd be like a deed of trust on the property that would be offset, is that?
Well, we didn't report any deed of trust on the other ones, but the cons, by the, by virtue of
Security agreement, I think we did on the other one, we had, uh, on the liquor license.
Well, that particular one, yes, yes, on that particular one. But we could go down that route as well, if you'd like to. That's all those kind of questions that I'm looking for your direction on is how, where do you want to go on this? What, what angle does we, do we take on it? Um, you know.
Well, the recognition is if we have no restaurants, we get no return.
Hundred percent.
No sales tax.
Yes.
If we provide this money from our reserves and we defer what we're getting to offset that in about six, seven, eight years, whatever it may be. We've got an operating restaurant and we start getting significant sales tax, so that we otherwise wouldn't have got.
Yes, and I would say I would take it one step further, which is you have to remember the overall goal, goal of reda, downtown redevelopment. The first series of projects you do.
Generate.
It, it, those first projects, they, they, they don't typically, like I, I've told you before, like I did a redevelopment project in another city where we bought a building or I can't remember how much we bought it for, I think it was maybe one point two million dollars and we ended up giving it to a developer. We gave it to them for free because they converted an office building into a residential use. In order for them to make that pencil, there was, there was no way they could have paid anything for that building. But once we established the residential market downtown, more people started building residential. Like when you have a downtown that hasn't been performing, you have to do some things initially that are some, somewhat of a lost leader for a period of time. But as you start creating a critical mass of other uses, right? Now other people, not only do we have more bodies coming, now other businesses start coming and those dollars start generating more revenue.
How did you overcome the concept of gift of taxpayer money?
And that particular project, we were in a different state. There are, there are no states as complicated as California.
But we are.
Yes, I agree.
So we have to overcome.
Yes, and I would, you know, we can certainly sit down with the attorney's office and work through that issue. But again, if we structure it very similar to the first program and just understand the return may take a little longer, you know, I feel confident in that approach.
I think tonight what we're trying to decide is to, um, provide staff regarding potential development.
Direction.
And that's what you want is direction on whether we agree that this potential development uh, of restaurants, uh, incentive program is something we want to pursue.
Yes.
My opinion is a hundred percent, I want to pursue it.
You let Dennis go first.
Okay, the only question I had, Mr. Madera's to ask, was this a gifting of taxpayer money? That was the question I had, I think it's been answered, thank you.
Counselor. All right, so I have a couple of questions and comments. Um, first of all, I think I over, overall, I'm okay with the concept. I did talk to the city manager about some specific concerns and questions and recommendations. Um, obviously, we're going to ask for a million dollars from our, our reserves to, to fund this because, you know, as stated before, we have money there that we can use and hopefully in the future it has a return. So I, I do believe there are some questions about the gift program and how that would work. I mean, would it be better to loan it to them and give them ten years to pay back or whether we give it as a grant and wait ten years to something happens? I mean, that's another debate. But what I was thinking was that right now the city manager is recommending two hundred fifty thousand dollar awards, up to two hundred fifty thousand. According to the staff report, the one example could, you know, take up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars as listed. My, my thought would be to, to limit the, the grant amount to two hundred thousand. You create four two hundred thousand dollar allocations. And you set the one, two hundred thousand for, uh, up to maybe fifty or twenty five, fifty thousand dollars for smaller businesses. So you would get four or five additional businesses besides the big businesses. As I've gone to downtown and talked to people, there are smaller businesses, not big developments in play or con, uh, concept. But smaller businesses, there's a baker downtown who does great bakery work. But she's got to cook at her house, she's got to bake at her house because she can't afford to put an oven in her business. So with the twenty five thousand, fifty thousand dollar grant, maybe she could put in the infrastructure and then bake from her stores that are baking from her house and help grow her business. There's a lot of little businesses like that in downtown that I think would benefit. So my idea would be to limit the grant to two hundred thousand for them. And then take the additional two hundred thousand and whether we do a twenty five thousand dollar cap or a fifty thousand dollar cap on a request, then we expand it to even smaller existing buildings. From what I understand, the example that's given to us in the staff report hasn't even been built yet. The money that they would get if they were in the process would help them build it. But I'm looking at existing buildings or existing foods, folks. So that's one idea that I wanted to bring to council. Um, I think you did talk about the reasoning for, for the, uh, no compete clause, I guess, what I would call it on the, you know, don't compete with anyone else. So I, I'm okay with, with that reasoning. And then I think for me, what I'm looking for is a, a, a more transparent process. When we did the ARPA funds, um, I don't know if any other council members were appraised as the process went through, but I found out who got the money like later on. I, not throughout the process. I, I, I didn't know who was on the committee, you know, how they were deciding and all that. I just know that, hey, Tap Yard got it, Rancho Brazil got it, we had to discuss about it, but others. So I want a little more transparency in that process in regards to who's applied, how much they applied for. Um, who's going to be on the selection committee? Um, you know, who, how did they determine who gets granted the money? Um, so I would like a little more transparency in that process as we, if we do move forward in this, this particular project. And, and then the last thing I just want to clarify, I mean, I know that you bring up the Herrera project as an example. So I just want to make sure that, because in the action items, you ask us to consider action item number two, which is to provide them conditional support. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna decide on whether we provide them the funding or not. They're going to have to go through the process like everyone else, right?
So, well, the, the short answer is yes, but I don't understand what you mean by.
Well, what I'm reading on action two, you're asking the council to provide additional support to the Tap Yard. Consider providing provisional financial assistance to the Tap Yard project, subject to the final program approval. I would rather
It was one or more.
And I think they, I think I would rather them go through the process like everyone else. And if they get selected, they get selected.
Yes.
But I, but I, for me, it's just, I want to make sure that, that when there are going to be other conditions.
Yep.
When you put this program together, so.
Yes. Um, our recommendation is you give us direction to move the program forward, but we're trying to give you other options.
Yeah, so, but, but I guess what I'm saying, so there's going to be a million dollars or seven hundred fifty thousand available, you know, because that's kind of the way I read, hey, there's a, there's, there's these folks that need the money, they have a deadline and
That's not what I'm commending to you tonight.
Well, but it, but it was in the staff report.
It's in the staff report because we have to present alternatives for you. Like one of the alternatives is you could deny that we do the program. Right? So that's one option. You could say, nope, we're not interested. Another option, you could say, yes, proceed with developing the program. Or another option is you might just go, you know, Mark, we don't like the program, but we love his project, let's just fund his project.
Well, I mean, I would hope more people would come if that's what we decide to do. But, but my point is that I think I, I like the program, I like to continue discussing what, how it'll look like. But those are my recommendations, that we lower the amount, try to give more smaller businesses an opportunity. Uh, because I think from my understanding, uh, of what I think the program should be, it's not necessarily to construct something per se, but to help businesses come into whether in existing space or if they're already existing business to be, you know, to do a lot better, uh, to provide service. So this isn't going to build a brand new restaurant, it's going to help towards that. But I also would like to see existing building, uh, businesses get some money.
Clarification, I, I don't understand. But I understand why you're talking about the smaller business that wants a kitchen. I don't understand why lowering the amount helps that situation because the program as described is up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which means you could have
Ten.
Ten fifty thousand dollars.
Or we can have four like we did in the past. We can have four. We had four two hundred fifty thousand in the ARPA round. All I'm trying to guarantee once, or two hundred thousand for small business. Maybe we can get, each of them can come for ten and we get ten businesses or twenty businesses. I just don't want it all to be sucked up in four major projects, which we did with ARPA.
So, uh, i- if we wanted to make sure that we had the bigger projects, we could have three two hundred fifty thousand max and a balance of two hundred fifty thousand, fifty thousand max and accomplish your purpose. Is, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, if that's the math that works to get three votes or my math gets three votes, that's the way it works, but that's, that's kind of the concept, yes.
I don't think tonight we're voting on the specificity of the way that it's, it's a
Only unless there's, unless there's a consensus for council on that level of specificity. If, for example, you guys say, when you bring back the program, just make sure you've got enough for some big and small projects or some, that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm in favor of, of a small project applying as well, but that can be delineated in the, in the application or in however you come up with the implementation of the, of the program.
Sure. And, and the only question I would have following Councilmember Sagala's comments is when he's talking about helping small businesses, I just want to make sure we're clear or I'm clear. Our thought has always been it's towards physical improvements. I want to make sure you're not talking about working capital, right? You're not talking about we're giving somebody money so that they can pay salaries or hire employees, right?
I'm, I'm talking about how what we did with Rancho Brazil, buying somebody a kitchen.
Yeah, physical improvements.
Yeah, we bought a big kitchen for Rancho Brazil, so something similar to that, yeah.
Well, I
One.
Oh, we have public comment here.
Well, with that too, I think the notion of, of the program and I know we have John Harmon here with the Downtown Association is connected with all of our existing buildings, uh, businesses. And we have Mr. Herrera and, and I can't remember the other individual's name here. We have a couple of developers that are in touch, you know, with this. W- we have talked about for years, um, how do we address the chess match that is improving downtown Tulare? And so I know there's a lot of conversations and we can spend a million dollars really quick and there's only so many million dollars that we have. But the point being which we've invested in is what's the couple of things that we can do for downtown? Because the discussion's been going on for forty five plus years of how to make that difference and impact. And it, and it, it's always been moving down the road of how to do it. So I like, I too, I think consensus of, we like the program in theory. How would it apply? And I think talking about improvements or the physical expansion, like I think the example of somebody buying a stove. Um, perhaps a direction could be, as a lot of times programs have, what is more familiar with this term, set aside. So maybe ten percent of it is set aside, that it's set aside specifically for small project or something. But I think there's a can, maybe, or there's a consensus here that there's big projects and small projects to what you described, city manager. I, I want to invite as well as public comment, but if, um, John, you're here, I don't want to put you on the spot that you mainly came here to speak, but if you have any comments on this, um, you're best in touch of what's going on, what does this look like? How do you think this impacts our, our existing businesses and as well as, is a spotlighting opportunity to build new stuff in downtown? Specifically restaurants.
I didn't really plan on saying anything, so thanks for the opportunity. Uh, John Harmon, Director of the Tulare Downtown Association. Um, I think you're on the right path. I think we do need programs like this. Um, you know, definitely helped Rancho Brazil with their experiment. And, uh, you know, sometimes things don't work out exactly the way we think or, or we hope. And, uh, what I, I, I think what I, probably what would work well is to also consider um, that it's a, you know, that you do maybe a hybrid program where some people are getting loans and some people are getting, um, something akin to a grant maybe or something like that. Um, I think a lot of the small businesses have different needs, uh, and, and different degrees, degrees of, um, frankly competence. Um, some of them make good investments and others, you know, they really need some counseling to go along with that. Um, you know, with that issuance of funding or, you know, purchasing the equipment. Um, but again, I, I would like to see the, the council approve something like this because I think we need that shot in the arm. Uh, one of the biggest comments we get in the downtown is we need more restaurants. And, um, I'm sure you're all aware that the Rancho Brazil, um, uh, had to cease operation. And I just got word, uh, uh, a couple of days ago that our little fall restaurant, Fall ninety nine closed because the, uh, landlord refused to renew the lease. Um, so, you know, we, we would, we were hoping that those two things would add to that, that, you know, diversity of cuisine in the downtown, which is really what we need. But over and over again, we hear these requests, bring more restaurants, let's have more restaurants. And I think this program would address that very issue that the public's begging for. Thank you.
I think with that, and the public listening too, is there's a lot of, for downtown, older buildings, building code issues, updates, and the example that you gave city manager, now the cost with S E to get your utilities. It's one more barrier, it's one more challenge. And what we did with the others was to invest, that if you're going to make that change, at least getting the buildings updated or get, if we have to get the utilities updated, how are we going to go about that? Um, so I think with Mr. Harmon's input and council's input of coming back with, I'm going to open it up for public comment more too. If anyone in chambers, who else would like to come and address this issue? Mr. Herrera, welcome again.
Adrian Herrera, thank you guys. Um, yeah, so, yeah, as Mark mentioned, we were, um, recipients of the initial grant for Tap Yard and I think I've seen everybody there. And I think one of the best stats we have there is, I think Fred can probably contest it, but I don't think the cops have been called there once. We've been almost open a year. I mean, that, that right there is huge. Because, you know, things get out of hand when you involve beer and things, but we, one thing that we kept there, um, it's family friendly and we focused on that. And we knew that that was important to, um, for us in our mission and also the city too, to have a place to do that. So, um, you know, to, to kind of tie into Mr. Sagala's comments on, um, the amount. I mean, so we had every intention of, I put together a partnership and, and to tie back to what Mark said, like, you start a little fire and then the, the fire kind of gets bigger, right? When my wife and I did Tap Yard, we had no investor. We took that on, um, on our own. And so with the help of the city, that was able to get done. Now it's in a conforming type of situation. And I do have, of course, uh, a note on the property, et cetera, but it took a lot getting there. And I was afraid to bring other people on that risk because it was downtown Tulare, right? We had to kind of prove concept. And I was afraid to bring other people on that risk because it was downtown Tulare, right? We had to kind of prove concept. Well, we proved it. Um, I I took a screenshot real quick because I tried to remember the number, but just the sales tax in quarter two alone. This quarter, um, exceeded twenty four thousand dollars in just sales tax. So we are doing it and it is happening. And so with that kind of, um, fuel that we started. You see other businesses coming. You see the twenty sixth hours coming. You see, um, David from Crave is coming and pouring into downtown. He's going to put a spot. Um, so food is definitely what we want to do and we found this opportunity and low and behold, like. To find the investors to kind of put a group together to now I can take a chance and and, you know, spread the risk and be confident about that. I made like, I don't know, four calls. I said, hey, I'm thinking about doing this and here's the kind of projections. I'm thinking this is what's going to happen. I don't even think they even has, yeah, man, sounds good. Talk to you later. Like, because we've proven it, we've taken, you guys were partners of that, so, um, to tie into that is. It's not that we definitely need the cost to help because S E has an issue that passed January first with mixed fuel. We can't build that project on electric only and expect kitchens to survive there. I mean, unless it's microwaves. I got, I don't know, frozen burrito kitchen? I don't know. Don't think it's a good concept, but. That's the issue from the state that kind of impacted us there and, uh, it really put us out of. Being in contention with making a positive return. We're not even hitting a grand slam. It's just a decent return. We're all going to invest. And bring another space, um, to life, uh, for the for downtown and it will lead to more, so my time's up, but yeah, thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comments on this program? All right. Any other comments? I I I put John Harmon on the spot because known him for a long time and I feel like I don't want to put others. But they're uncomfortable with it. It's all good. Do you have?
Are you coming up? No.
Do you have a collection of of?
I do.
Wants to try to put some draft together.
I do, but for one question, and this is a very important question. I need this definitive answer tonight, direction tonight. Are we doing a grant program or a loan program? And the reason why is because if we're doing a loan program. If we're doing a grant program, it's different. It's we don't, we're not looking at their financials. We're not looking at their credit worthiness. We're looking at the. Like we did in the last program, we looked at enough, they had to prove to us they had the money to do the project. I didn't go back and look at bank statements and tax returns and. I just said, okay, you you have the wherewithal to put the money you have to put in so that we'll put in our amount of money and I'd still recommend we do the same thing. If we do a loan program with an expectation of of repayment, I I've managed loan programs before. I'm not a banker. Um, we could go that route, but it's a whole different animal and, um.
Can't you present us both so that we can, we, I I know it's more work, but this is in.
I'm not afraid of work, um.
If you present us with both, then we're in a position to evaluate which which direction to go. You're asking. You're asking for a decision now to go one way or the other.
I will do my best to give you both. I'm trying to bring this back at the next council meeting, which is means I have one week to put it together, so. Um, I will, I will outline for you what's involved in a loan program. And what our recommendation would be in terms of how we would handle that, so I can put that together for you and then you can tell me at that meeting which way to go.
Quick, quickly for that, couldn't it be like what we've done with R D A? Which is in the past they did a, you know, a five years and then after five years it's forgivable, so.
You could.
Yeah, we could do a soft note.
Could do that, or you could do a loan guarantee where we're we're just guaranteeing the loan that they're going to originate with the bank. I mean, there's other ways of doing that for sure.
So, um, just I know the city's done different options, R D A or when you give money for. You know, other projects with, well, I'll say like affordable housing projects, you know, there's a note. And then R D A did forgivable loans. Um, the other, the the other part of, and I think talk, the council agrees with this too, though, is. It what grabs me is perhaps that's some of the bigger stuff, if it's perhaps zero to fifty thousand. That that's buying the stove or doing the expansion part, that perhaps what does that look like in a a grain? A little different dynamic, uh, or see the options with that. I think it's different if somebody getting five thousand to buy a stove. Compared to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for.
Yeah.
That dynamic.
All right, we'll play around with it.
Economic development purposes, this whole program is for is normally is is is. An incentive for new restaurants to come in.
Yes.
It's almost a different program to allow an expansion of existing restaurants.
I I I think you're going to have to do both because. I I think I think we should do both at the same time, because if you don't do that, I could see a scenario where you have an existing restaurant that says, hey, wait a minute. I came in two years ago, nobody gave me anything. Now you're giving this guy two hundred thousand or two hundred fifty thousand. They're competing with me. You're putting me out of business. I want to, I want to avoid that scenario.
Right, and 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 two things that I wanted to add, Mr. Mayor, so the the or a question was, um, what is the two years I? Application period, what does that mean? I think this money is going to be gone in a week.
No.
So, I mean, in other words, like, what's the two-year thing?
Well, we come back with the parameters, you'll understand that better, but it it's it's, um. Again, it's only restaurants, right? And if if we have, you know, for example, let's say we have. Four existing restaurants that say I want to put a new awning in my building. I want to do an ADA improvement and I want, and so we spend. Fifty thousand with those four restaurants. And then we have this one big project. Let's say they're eligible, they apply and the committee recommends whoever that's going to be. So that means we've only spent, you know, three hundred thousand dollars out of the million. I'm saying two-year timeframe in which people can apply. There's got to be a date by which we close the program. And so I'm thinking two years is enough time to give everybody an opportunity to submit an application.
Right. And then just real quick, so on the idea of the loan and grant. I know we we did the deal with Maverick, the gas station where we, uh, provided them.
Yes.
You know, after certain years, we gave them, you know, back taxes or whatever. Are these restaurants too small for that concept?
Um.
Because, you know, because Maverick is a gas station that's going to generate a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
But are these two, are these too small to get into something like that?
In my opinion, a hundred percent, yes, uh, because when you remember those deals. We were talking about a Chick-fil-A, a Maverick, a whole other set of out parcel projects. Like the amount of sales tax that was going to be ju- gas and sales tax revenue is going to be generated from that project is much more substantial. Now, there was a four, they were, those projects were in around about four hundred thousand dollar investment. We were just going to pay them back fifty percent of the sales tax that's collected over time. We were estimating it to be. Can't remember now, maybe it was a three to five year period on those projects. They're going to generate a lot more money than a typical small restaurant will.
Yeah, and I and that's my thought, but I hope you do consider the two hundred thousand model to see how that.
We'll do big and small stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, with that then, I'm under.
We do have a consensus.
Yeah, I would understood the input.
Thank you.
Consensus to mark with that. Eleven point three, loan agreement with Faria Family Two Limited Partnership. Mister Mondell, Mister Zamora.
Um, I'm going to do a little bit and then I'll turn it over to you, right? I'll do the easy lift here. So the council, this. You'll recall that we in the past had brought you a a similar agreement with. The International Agri Center, this is for the International Agri Center Way Extension Project. Um, this is one where, uh, you know, we've received the four million dollars in federal funds due to the project. We are in the process of completing the construction drawings. We're now having to go through an environmental review process, which will take us probably six months. But this is the last one we are waiting for from the Faria family. They were working out some details in terms of the collateral on the property that they're using. Remember, each party had a post collateral for to secure these loans. Uh, in the in the event that didn't repay us. So the way this program's going to work is. Once we have a project, you know, we've gotten bids, we bring it back to council and say, hey, we want to hire this contractor for X dollars. It's going to take them Y months to complete the project, then we would go to T CAG, draw down the funds, borrow those funds from T CAG. Our security on those funds is the dollars that we have, uh, measure our dollars that we have collected every year from that. That's what secures our loan with them. We give these loans to these two parties. These parties make payments back to us to cover their two point and a half million dollar portions of the cost of the road project. You know, as those dollars are drawn down by the contractor. Um, so this was the last one we were waiting for. This is exactly the same as the other agreements. Mario, could you get a little more specifics on what the agreements are and what they mean?
Sure, so there's there's basically four agreements, um, in this packet. So there's the loan agreement, which is a overall structure of what's happening. Um, and then you have the note, which is actually the Farias family, uh, agreement to repay. The loan of the line of credit, um, and then you have the security agreement, which is. Uh, it gives that, it gives the city the interest in the Faria properties that they're putting up. Um, those are two, I don't think I have the exact acreage, but it's two, um, parcels. Um, the assessed value is a little over two million, so we know it's like significant because that's just the assessed value. Um, but they're both in the area of, um, that southeast area, um. That that we're that they're developing on. Um, and then there's a short form deed of trust and assignments of rents. And that's basically a document that gets recorded, um, that basically tells everybody, hey, there's there's a security interest that the city has on these two properties. And gives us the ability to foreclose if they don't repay the loan.
Just for clarification, I think the staff report.
Oh, yes.
Indicated that, uh, uh, the deed of trust was secured by property owned by the International Agri Center. You you were going to correct that?
Yes, so in the staff report, not in the documents, but in the staff report, there's a reference that, um, the loan is secured by. Uh, property owned by the Agri Center and that's incorrect. It's both of these pieces of property are Faria family properties.
Yeah, with that, thank you for reminding me. With that, I will go to public comment. Does anyone in chambers wish to make public comment on item eleven point three, loan agreement with Faria Family Two Limited Partnership? Then click, do we have anyone on the phone? With that, I will close the public comment. And I'll start, uh, this side, uh, Dennis, do you have comments on this?
Yeah, the only comment I'd make is this is exactly identical to the agreement that was entered into with the International Agri Center. The city of Tulare is only serving as a conduit. Uh, this basically is an agreement between the Farias and T CAG. And the the International Agri Center and T CAG. Uh, to provide interest-free money that will be repaid, uh, as as the funds are called for. But to be able to do that, the city is involved. Has to be involved and the understanding was if the city was going to be involved, the city would be reimbursed for its legal fees. And any other costs, which, uh, that's within the agreement itself, the loan agreement. Is that correct, Mario?
That's correct.
And, uh, so there is, uh. Any, anything as it relates to the agreement itself really i- is between T CAG. And the, uh, uh, the part in question, whether it's the International Agri Center or, uh, or the Faria family. So in that regard, um, we're just duplicating what we've already done. Except with the third, the last part.
Vice Mayor.
My impression was just like Councilman Madera said, that this is, we're just a go-between, that there's. State law or some something that says that TK can't give them the money, they've got to give it to somebody else. We're the logical ones to give it to, to then pass it on to the Farias.
Councilman Zidane.
Um, no, I agree with that concept and I and I appreciate that point, but you know, we're the, we're the public. Agency that has to do this in public. I don't know what. Agreements there are between T CAG and the Faria family or the Ag Center. Behind closed doors or whatever, but this is the public process that we have to take and so.
Well, you're on the board of T CAG.
Yeah, but.
You'd know, you'd know.
This never came to T CAG.
Yeah, there's no agreement.
It never, it never came to T CAG, T CAG.
There.
There was some.
There was only discussions about this could be a vehicle to make that happen.
Yeah, so it never came to T CAG, T CAG never approved it.
T CAG did approve our agreement.
Well, yeah, but that, but we, I I'm not privy to whatever. Hey, you do this, you do that, and this is what we expect. I I'm not privy to that stuff. But what I'm concerned about is 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 things that I brought to the city manager, and I brought this up at the last conversation we had was. Sort of the the process as to which this this was would work. I had asked, uh, Mike earlier, uh, I know in the past he's given us a overall ballpark budget on the entire. Project, so for the public, this is part of the agreement that the city of Tulare was going to initiate building a street. Off the New Interchange all the way up to Turner, International Ag Center Way, that we were going to build a street. And then there was a partnership where the Ag Center, the Faria family and the city of Tulare will all pay a third of the cost. So each one was responsible for a third of the cost. And over the years, unfortunately, the cost has gone up, right, Mike? And so I, the last I recall was about twelve point something million dollars was the cost.
Uh, I just checked, uh, prior to the meeting, the construction phase cost is just under nine point two million. And that includes, um, the construction soft costs, so that's, um, the inspection, construction management. Labor compliance, all those issues too.
Right, but did that include minus the four million dollar grant that we received?
The four million dollars would go towards that.
So then this entire project would then be five point nine million.
I guess I don't understand, uh.
No, no, I mean, let me see if I can, I want to explain.
Because we got four million dollars from the Fed.
Allow me to explain the way I understand it, and then if I'm not clear, please, I'll correct me or help me. So, um, you are correct that originally each party was going to be putting in up to two point five million dollars. The city's two point five million dollars went into largely into the design and anything that's left over after the design, that'll go into construction. The other two parties, two and a half million dollars is going into construction, okay? We got, we that we knew when we started that process, that wasn't going to be enough money to do the whole project. We were very fortunate to get the four million dollar federal earmark. That money is is theoretically everybody's money. That's money going into the project as a whole, right? So that means we have eleven and a half million dollars to do the project. We don't know what the bids are going to come in yet because we haven't gotten to that point. We're not going to be able to bid it out until we get the environmental done now, which is, you know, probably another six months or so. When we bid it out, that's when we're going to come back to council and we're going to say, okay, here's the total dollars. And that's when we may have to reset the dollar amounts to the parties too. We might go back in that point and each, we look at, we should look at the thing and say, okay. Everybody, you know, the four million stays in. And then and then on top of that four million, each party's putting in X, you know, X Y into up to the two point five. But each party will know what their portion is, which will be whatever portion of the two point five. It may be all the two point five or it could be. Two point two, I don't know that yet until we get those those final numbers in. That's when we'll know, that's when we'll set that.
And in sitting with the board and discussions with the Faria family through, uh, Lindredge. This is a true partnership on the front end, not the tail. On the front end of this construction where people are putting up the money and the bottom line is the federal earmark is spent first. And then the balance of the cost is shared equally by.
No, no, I get that, I get.
So if it comes in at the nine point two, you know, back out the four and split the balance by three. That's what we're doing.
No, no, I get that and it could be lower. I mean, it could be the the last time that this was brought up, I did the rudimentary math. And it turned out to be like one point eight to two point one million was going to be everybody's share. So, I understand it, I understand and 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 so, but my my, so my point is, is. One, is it too premature to set the two and a half million, knowing that it may be a lot less? What is, when would the money be available from the last conversation at the Ag Center? Uh, you know, or talking to Mike Miller, it would be eighteen months out before any bills were due. In other words, we've already paid for the costs that the city managers talked about. But if we were to, we still go out, we still have to go out to bid, we have to select, uh, uh, someone that's going to construct. They're going to have to start constructing and then they send us a bill, uh, for or or payment. So how long is that?
Yes. Remember, I already told you this and I sent this to council a couple of times now, but. We're not giving them any money now and we're not asking for any money from T CAG now. We are not going to do any of that. Until we get the bids in and we come to you and say, here's the low bidder, we recommend you hire this contractor for X dollars. And Y amount of time to build the project. Let's say you guys say, yes, go do that. That's when we're going to go to T CAG and say, we're ready to borrow whatever the exact, we can only borrow up to five million. It might only be four point two. I I don't know what the number's going to be. That's when we, and that's when the other parties know exactly what their contribution is going to be. So they're not getting the money now and they're going to hold it for two years. They're only going to get the money when it comes time for us to do the project so that then they have the dollars to pay the bills as those bills come in.
So, so just, uh, let me, let me kind of follow the dollar bill itself. Let me follow what I would call the mula when I was a kid. So the money, so we're moving along with the construction project, there's a bill. Three million dollars for something, right? A third, a third, and a third is going to be paid. Then we ask for T CAG for the money. We get the money, we turn. We get the money, we turn around and give it to the Faria and the Ag Center. And then they turn around and give it right back to us? Is that how the process works?
Theoretically, yes, but there are, we we're gonna, we would, we, let's say their total cost for each of them is two point two million dollars.
Right.
So we go to TCAG and we borrow four point four million.
Right.
Then we give two point two million, uh this is after construction, we've already not, when we're ready to start construction. We give two point two million to the Ag Center, we give two point two million to Faria, okay? Then the first bill comes in, and that bill, let's say, is a million, it's let's say it's uh fifteen hundred, fif- one point five million dollars. We go to, we go to Faria and we say, you owe us five hundred thousand now? We go to Ag Center, you owe us five hundred, and we have our five hundred, right? Or whatever the number would be at that time. But the point is, is we're drawing down. We're not giving them any more than they need, and we're only drawing down per each draw, what is needed to make that payment.
So they're getting five hundred thousand in your scenario and not two point two.
No, in my scenario, they would be getting the mon- their their total amount upfront at that point.
Alright, so so that's kind of like the 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 question, the concern I have is that. They're going to get the full amount, in your scenario, each, it was a one and a half million dollar bill. And each had to pay five hundred thousand, but we're giving them two point two million.
Yes.
They pay us back five hundred thousand, they keep one point seven million. Then we get, then we don't know when the next bill's going to happen.
Well, we'll know that, we will have a sense of that.
But in that time, there's nothing stopping anybody from putting that money in a high-yield savings account and earning interest. Off an account until the next bill is due. There's nothing precluding anybody from doing that.
That's right.
So they'll make fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars on a one point seven million dollars in a high-yield savings account every month. Until the bill is due six months from now. Another five hundred thousand or a million, whatever the bill is.
We'll put our money that we get into an interest-bearing account.
So I guess my understanding is why, 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 is that what TCAG wants us to do? I mean, I'm trying, it doesn't make sense to me to give someone money.
That's what all the parties agree to when we.
I understand that, yeah, but we weren't pervy to that negotiation.
Talked through all this.
I I brought it up, I spent time at the last one.
I I just. I get what you're putting on paper and concept, but I, and also working with large federal and state grants. The component of what you're talking about is drawing the money ahead, which is in advance. Cause you have an agreement for four point four, and I, and what I've understood, we're playing, w- we're the the underwriter and we're the conduit. So the part of what you're talking about is is, I've seen examples is either one. When the contract bill comes in at four point four million, as you're saying. We wouldn't draw four point four million at that point in time unless instructed to do so, but the agency wanted. The first bill would be in their milestones that they would have is. Uh first bill is one point two million, we draw one point two million at that point in time and pay the contractor. The notes in the application would still be the same, and I guess the accounting procedure and perhaps what's grabbing, I can't speak for you, Sagala. What's grabbing Sagala's attention, I think, Mark, is what you described, is we would draw in advance of four point four million and give them to the parties. And I think that's the part which questions me, why would we give it to the parties when we would just hold it because we're going to pay the contract bill anyway? They owe it, we're the conduit for it, but we're not giving somebody one point or the thought of. We're literally giving them also in advance of money that they're going to hold on to, and then a a. A promise to pay as bills come in. I, we would draw the money as needed, city would hold it, city would pay the bills. But of course, these third parties have their commitment of they're paying the loan back. So it goes TCAG, city. Faria Ag Center, but Faria Ag Center is the one paying the loan back to TCAG, so.
Through us.
Yeah, through us, but in that process is, we could hold, we, the city of Teleria could hold the money, city of Teleria could pay the bills. There wouldn't be a cash advance given to a third party for them to hold and us to get back at a later point in time.
If that's the prerogative of council, then I will rewrite what we all agreed to previously, and I'll send it to them.
And and I think what I'm mentioning is not unusual, and I think so, especially with.
What what we're doing here. First of all, Michael, normally, building a road like this. The developer later on would complete the road with uh as development occurs. Constructing this road ahead of time very rarely occurs, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And we've entered into an agreement where we have two parties to partner with us. Which are the Faria family and the International Agri Center to do this upfront, to front this money. At at the front end with all the infrastructure and all the road, we've been down this. One time already because we approved the International Agri Center. We entered into this with the idea that it was in the best interest of the city. And in the best interest of economic development to do it on the front end. Isn't that right?
Uh that, I believe that's what the council's direction was, yes.
That was my recommendation as well.
And and the recommendation. And what TCAG has done is TCAG for economic development purposes on their own. And I think uh uh between Ted Smalley and Mr. Vanderpoel and TCAG itself. Had the ability to provide these two parties with an interest-free loan. Uh while all this was occurring, to make it easier for them, because they're doing it on the front end. To do that, we're the conduit.
Yeah.
Why are we having trouble with this when it's the second time?
I'm not, hold on, Dennis, I'm not debating the mission, the purpose, the, what I'm saying is sometimes there's applications given in abstract. That moving money. Now, what we're talking about, though, is the actual cash movement. You're advancing cash, and the part that I'm just inquiring with it is, if you're advancing cash. And then we're going to pay the bills and we're facilitating the contract, why ahead of time? Would you, I'm just asking why, why would you give a third party one point seven million to simply hold? Then when you're going to pay the bill, get it back from them, why wouldn't we simply hold the one point seven million and pay the bills? And be the facilitator and the operator, and it reduces that exposure of movement of cash? That's the part I'm a little confused on of why you would give somebody. X amount of money to hold in their bank account and then have an expectation to give it back. You're doing in advance, you're doing it for economic development. Yeah, absolutely. It's just the accounting mechanics of that. I'm just asking. When a lot of government agencies that go to developers or produce that is, you draw it at the time the bill is needed. You get that cash, Cal Home, for example, will do advances of full loan amount. Full grants of five hundred, two million dollars, they'll advance that, and then you provide documentation. But for example, in the process is when you draw it, give it to a third party, and then, okay, we're going to pay a bill, then ask the third party to get it back. Why don't we just hold it and it takes that exposure out of?
So we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I'm curious why.
So when we talked to TCAG, they weren't interested in making draws with us.
Okay.
They were interested in giving us the full amount up to five million that we need when we know we're going to do the project. So that's what's going to happen with the city. We're going to get, what, let's say it's the full five, we're going to take, we're going to borrow the full five, okay? At one time, we're not doing draws with TCAG. The only difference here now is you're saying, instead of the city doing the same thing with these borrowers. The city just holds the money and pays the bills for the borrowers, and then we tell the borrowers. You need to pay this money back to TCAG as of this date. We just tell them what their repayment schedule is with TCAG. Cause otherwise, we're paying TCAG back, and that's not our intention. That's the only difference in what you're saying now, because we are, we're going to draw the full five, we still draw the full five. We pay the bills as the bills come in, and then we notify them what the bills are and what their repayment schedule is with TCAG.
No, I mean, and I think that's the, for me, it's a perfect solution. I appreciate the mayor clarifying that, because no one's questioning the the process and how it's done. I mean, if if I would prefer if TCAG could do it this on their own, they should, but for whatever. Legal issues or whatever, they can't, they're asking us to do it. I would rather it go that way, where we're going to draw the money. We hold it in an account, and it's a credit to the Farias and to the Ag Center, say, hey, we got a bill. It's one and a half million dollars, so we're going to take half a million out of yours, you know, the, so. My understanding is, I mean, God, I mean, zero interest loan, two and a half million, I wish I had friends like that too. So the issue is, how do you?
Just for the record.
You know, how do you?
We're borrowing the money.
Yeah, I know, but how do you, how do you do that? So that it, the the exposure of the cash is not that, that's my own concern.
Sagala, I I don't mean to be feisty and pick a fight, but man, I really got to call you out on some of the language you use here. So you have said done behind closed doors, wish I had friends like this. And you know, I I really don't appreciate how you take those comments and run to your media buddies. And we're going to get a press release of how this loan was done behind closed doors, much like your comment of us bailing out. Um spade entertainment, so I really would appreciate the context if we're going to frame, I'm just walking through mechanics. But when you throw in language like that, it gets me skeptical that the comments that are going to come out of this meeting is. City of Teleria does behind closed door deal for Faria family. So I I would hope you would be mindful of that, you might disagree and you might not. Completely uh approve of this process, whatever your your word means, but the community's watching. Your your connections to the media are watching, and I really wish you would give more. Carefulness and perspective towards the dynamic that we're walking through instead of subjective slams like that, because it's really disappointing.
I appreciate your comments.
So council, if that's your direction, then I will sit down with the parties and make sure they understand that. When once we, once council selects the contractor and we've established the dollar amounts and the timetable for the work. That we will then draw the full amount of whatever that is necessary, up to the five million, we will draw that, we will hold the money. We will earn the interest on the money, and then we will pay the bills on behalf of the other two parties. And we'll notify them of when they owe the repayment to to TCAG, I will.
I'm not, hold on, I'm not. Can I make a comment? Cause I've said I'm fault. Let me do that. I'm, he's making, hold on, I'm just clarifying. You're making it sound like I said to do that. What I'm bouncing off is is that's what I absorbed you were doing in the process anyway, that when you say we.
Yeah.
The city of Teleria was already paying the bills, city of Teleria was already playing accountant. And doing the AP and the AR, if you will.
Yes.
So that's not new.
Yes.
You're already doing that.
Correct.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
Would, cause I don't repeat myself, it's just when we, instead of, if we're doing AP and AR, accounts payable and accounts receivable.
Yes.
We're giving somebody else the money and then asking for it back compared to just holding it since we're doing.
I agree, I understand your point, yes.
I'm not telling, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
Reality is, we've negotiated an agreement that that enticed the Faria family. And the International Agri Center to get involved on the front end and spend their money under the circumstances. And TCAG, as an incentive, said, let's put together this plan using the city of Teleria as a conduit. So that you'll be able to hang on to your money and earn interest on on that. We figured somewhere in the vicinity of maybe seventy five thousand dollars over the course of this three years. And if we do that, it makes the incentive greater for the individuals that don't have to do this. And all we're deciding is to be a conduit. And to to, if we start unraveling this agreement, the whole thing could fall apart. You're looking at me like it wouldn't? Have you dealt with the Faria family before, Mr. Mayor? I have.
I am not questioning you're dealing with the Faria family. The point that you're bringing up that now I think brings awareness, and I don't, didn't want to dive into this. Then is the notion of, much like when you receive federal funds, USD or others, you have to put in an interest-earning account. And that interest-earning account has to be used towards the project. Is therefore in our agreements that the interest-earning account has to specifically all go towards the project.
No.
So you're taking public funds, you're putting it in an account, and you're earning interest on it, and what happens to that interest?
Well, but the decision of whether it go, how it goes and who's earning the interest was made by TCAG, not us.
I I think there's room.
TCAG approved, TCAG in that contract approved that process.
I would say that I don't think the process is clearly outlined in any of our loan documents. I would say that, you know, what we've had is email correspondence kind of outlining kind of the the. The process of how it will work in accord with those loan documents, I can go back and have a conversation. Really, you're just talking about one clarification here, okay? The clarification is simply the expectation of, are we, when we get the loan dollars, are we dispersing them to the other two parties? They hold the dollars and then they pay us when we ask for draws, that's the way it was originally discussed. Versus, we never give them the loan proceeds, we simply hold them and we pay the bills on their behalf. That's the conversation, that's all we're talking, that's the only difference we're talking about today. I'll go have that conversation with them, and if they have no problems with that, that wasn't exactly the way we discussed it originally. If they have no problems with that, then I will, I will make that clarification through email to all the parties, and then we'll move forward. I'll let council know. I I have some confidence that the party will probably agree to that, it it'll just be different than the original understanding.
I. I'm not giving direction. I think, Mark, to what you're asking, and if the agreements were set by TCAG. And I think to break out here is the mechanics of what TCAG set forth to do. And that part was appro- yes, as you had said, approved by TK, if this was set in motion. And granted, enforced, this was the motions that were approved. I I'm not giving direction for that, I think then in understanding that.
Correct.
If the directions, I think, are not clear, direct, and you report on that, and if. How council feels about that, that I think that's a part of what you're offering to report on, is to report on. I'm not giving against direction toward, give redirecting that or re-breaking that out, I just would like to hear that process.
You can't, it it, I just, just so we're clear, okay, okay? We had a, eh eh, because this is where we go from here, okay? Because I I'm going to have to go back and have some explanation, uh I don't think Mario will, Michael may. Uh Mark will, we, we've had these same documents. That came before the city council.
Alright.
And I can't remember how Mr. Sagala voted, but I I I, we approved on a four-one vote, these documents. For the International Agri Center. Now, these same documents, exactly the same documents for the same purpose under under the same circumstances. Are coming before us again for the Faria fam. And for some reason, we're not approving.
Nobody said that.
Well, let me.
Okay, then let's do this. I make a motion. That we approve the proposed loan agreement, promissory note, security agreement, and short-form deed of trust. And assignment of rents between the city of Teleria and the Faria family, number two, limited partnership. And authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents as prepared by Mr. Zamora. And identical to the ones by the International Agri Center that we have previously approved.
And I would second that motion. In adding that what the city manager agreed that he would do is he would review those documents and provide clarity of what those agreements were of how. The transactions we discussed would happen.
What what I, what I described to you in terms of the process of the dispersment's not covered in the documents, that's a separate email communication. I'll just go back with those parties and have this discussion. So if you prove this document tonight, it won't, it won't change, you know, this project still moves forward. I'll just work out to them the specifics of when dollars get dispersed and and those things. I'll let you guys know.
So what you mentioned, hold on, so what you mentioned, point of order, really what I'm asking is not appro-. Is a little bit out of order, because that has nothing to do actually, nor is it stated.
Yes.
In these.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, uh uh on some discussion on this, I mean, uh if you go back and listen to the conversation that night, I brought this up. I brought this up to the city manager after the meeting. We talked about it at length, my concerns, the same thing, we're going to give an entity two and a half mu- a half million dollars upfront. There's nothing stopping them from putting it in a high-yield savings account, making twenty five thousand dollars a month off of off of a free, no-interest loan.
It's not twenty five, it's not twenty five thousand.
Well, I talked to a couple of banks, and that's what they quoted me, maybe their banks are, it's a five percent yield, and that's what it what it is right now. So I talked, I called a couple of banks just to get it, an idea of what two and a half million dollars of interest makes a month. That's what they told me, eighteen to twenty two thousand dollars. So. I brought this up, so it's not like it didn't come up before. I would have hoped that 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 process was addressed. I have a fundamental concern that we're going to be fronting money. Uh and and then they're going to pay us, and then they're just going to pay us back, they just hold the money. Uh because the other question I had in what I read in this contract and or agreement, and I may be wrong and read it wrong. But the money's available to other things than construction, is that correct? The the, it's not just the construction, but it's available to.
While the city attorney, the city attorney looks for that.
TCAG is providing the money, we're not, we're a conduit.
I understand that, but we also have to be have have some responsibility as a conduit. And I mean, if someone said, hey, I got ten million dollars that I can't give these folks, and you conduit to them, and. We just have to have some kind of responsibility.
Terms of the process that we're discussing, that's not identified in the loan documents, for example, right? Which makes sense that it wouldn't necessarily be in the loan documents. I have communicated that with the parties previously, and I did communicate that with council. There's two weekly reports where I I outline the process with its entirety, and if you remember the first time I did it, there were some more questions and concerns. So I took those questions, concerns, I went. So I took those questions, concerns, I went back to the parties. And they agreed with what council's concerns and direction were. And then I sent a correction email, which I also sent that to you again. I think it was yesterday or this morning, Councilmember Segala. So those conversations have occurred. I will do it a third time. Based after tonight's meeting, I'll just clarify that this is the way we prefer to do it. I have some confidence that the party will hopefully agree to it. If they do not, I will bring it back to council. If they do, I will advise council accordingly. So your approval of this tonight won't affect that process. My separate email discussion with them will. Mario, have you a chance to look at the second question Mr. Segala had?
Yeah, so it's not, it's not completely unrestricted. Because the borrower can't use loan proceeds for anything outside of the loan, um, for the purpose of the loan. But that would be anything related to development of the the commercial retail lodging accommodations, um, operational needs. And helping facilitate the overpass and the alignment. Broader than just specific, you know, uh, construction. But not so broad that they could go out and buy another property unrelated, things like that.
So so in other words, we're still having discussion with the motion. So in other words. Some of that, they would have to come to you, the city manager and say, hey, uh, we like to borrow a hundred thousand of that two point two, two point five, whatever. To do some marketing of.
There's no scenario where I would recommend approval of anything.
No, I mean, they could come.
They could ask us, but that would.
Okay, because, you know.
All right. So with that, we have a motion and we have a second. The motion is back, which is with Mr. Maderos's original motion to approve. For the staff report that we have in front of us. I, all in favor?
No, let's take a roll call.
Roll call vote, all right. Ma- Madam Clerk, would you, Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote of the council?
Councilmember Maderas. Mayor Isherwood. Councilmember Sayer. Vice Mayor Harold. Councilmember Segala. Motion passes four to one.
Moving forward, we're on item eleven point four, Heritage Tree Preservation Ordinance Revisions. Chris Orr. Mr. Orr, how are you?
Good, thank you. Uh, it came to our attention that the ordinance. Didn't quite really explain some of the procedures we had regarding the arborist, the heritage tree policy. We then consulted with the city attorney to help clean up the language, uh, to make it more. Uh, I guess in line with, uh, actual ordinance and the language in here is the recommended language by the city attorney.
With staff's comments on eleven point four, is there a lot for public? Will open for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to speak on eleven point four Heritage Tree Preservation Ordinance? Anyone on the phone? All right, with that, I will close public comment. Uh, questions or comments from council? There's no questions or comments. Do we want to present an action?
And Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to pass the print and ordinance repeating and replacing sections eight point five, two point zero one zero. Eight point five, two point zero three zero. Eight point five, two point zero six zero and eight point five, two point zero seven zero. Of chapter eight, five, two, reservation of heritage trees of the Tulare Municipal Code.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second for approval of eleven point four. All in favor? Any names? Motion carries five oh. That's right, that was that. Moving forward to item twelve, future agenda items. Oh, there's a thing says none submitted, but we have twelve point one. Study session on Inyo Corridor Project. It was submitted by Councilman Segala.
Uh, this, the request is explained, it's self-explanatory. If anybody. Has any questions, uh, I'd be happy to answer them. City manager might have some comments.
I do, uh, just a couple of things. Um, first, I just need to make a correction. Um, it was not five hundred thousand dollars on ARPA funds. It was in fiscal year twenty-three mid-year budget, we had a surplus of five hundred thousand dollars. And we had a discussion about what should we use those funds for? And council at that time said use them for the Inyo Corridor Project. I told council at that time, I don't. I don't know what we'll do with five hundred because it's gonna take some time to figure out what we need to do in that project. And that was important that I made that statement because, as you know, those funds don't roll over year to year. So they weren't, there were no dollars included in the twenty-four budget for the Inyo Corridor. We still are working on it because it's part of the council's strategic plan. So we have been outlining, when Josh was here, it was his project. He outlined a whole process. Uh, of kind of how to do the study and what we're gonna work on, what we looked at. We did some maps. We started looking at some areas. We were looking at things like property acquisition and zoning changes and. Thomas came in and I've handed the project to him and he's been working on it and thinking about it. I tried to put two hundred and fifty thousand in the budget this year. You know, council unfortunately that that money wasn't included in the budget this year because I know you got the individual sheets where you can look through each line item. And we didn't have that in there for the project. We tried to get it in there. We're still working on it. Um, and if you want to do a workshop, we can do a workshop where we present to you where we're at with the project and how we're thinking about it. What we think would be the next step of things to do and what those costs might be. Or we could just put that in the weekly report, uh, however you want to do it, but that's sort of the status of that.
So, so I'm understanding there's zero dollars for zero, the Inyo Corridor?
At this time, council did not budget any money this year in the budget.
Well, I wish we would have known that. I mean, to at least try to have a key for it. I mean, I. You know, uh, I don't know. I mean, I I talked to Councilwoman Sayer today and and she was the genesis for me bringing this thing forward. You know, she liked to see something done before her term ends and, you know, uh, and so I thought there was money for. Rebuilding onings, acquiring property, whatever. So that was the original thought of the five hundred thousand dollars to paint. Hey, paint your buildings. It looks pretty or put in onings or, you know, whatever. So now there's zero money.
Well, if you know Councilmember Segala, the dollars do not roll over from one budget to another. That's why every year you have to budget and you also know that there were no dollars allocated because you got the individual spreadsheet with all the line items. So I, like I said, I tried to find a way to put the money in a budget. Unfortunately, this budget year was tight with all the other things that we had to fund.
So what what we have in front of us, council, is is there consensus to put twelve point one um, on the agenda?
Can can I just make a comment? Um, I was under the misconception as well that there was five hundred thousand dollars allocated for the corridor. I talked to the city manager about that today. It was in my mind that we were going to look at unused. Property or property where things can be torn down and and replace or refurbished. He explained this to me, which I, um, I have to say I don't look at every budget item. So I wasn't aware of that. Uh, so that's where my misconception came in. So I understand. I I would like to know where we are. If it's premature to have a study session at this point, I would understand that. But I'd kind of either a memo or something to know what's being done and where we are.
Could definitely give you a memo in the weekly report.
So so I'd like to move to have this put on the agenda to even consider what that study would look like, how we did with the healthcare presentation. There is the West Side, um, study as well that Jennifer's in her department or her folks are looking at that they're working. If you guys may recall, I had an extra sixteen thousand dollars left in ARPA funds that I designated. To piggyback onto a bigger study. You guys don't know how many calls I get about if we're ever gonna build anything on the West Side. Are we ever gonna get this or we're ever gonna get that? It's on social media. I get hit up at the market every day or I'm at wherever I'm at. I think it, I think it, I owe it to advocate for my constituents on the West Side. I don't know about the council member Sayer, but. I owe it to them to have a conversation on what can be done. What is coming down the pipeline? What 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 if we're, are we ever gonna get McDonald's on the West Side? Are we ever gonna get a Taco Bell or something? So I think this study session would give the public that opportunity to see what we're working on, to see if there's any progress. What what are the limitations? The limitations I know on the West Side is we don't have enough land like they do on the East Side of Moonee. We have very limited business corridors. You know, uh, there's another thing that I'm trying to create more commercial property on the West Side through another process. So I would move that we. We have your. Move it to the to the to have at least a conversation of what this study session would look like.
We have a motion with the twelve point one. Is there a second? Well, the same issue. Segala made a motion to recognize the motion that he wants to put, uh, this item on the agenda.
I was second it.
There's a motion and there's a a second going to that. This is wait, this is totally appropriate, right, Mario? I mean, this is an action item, so we could do the vote. There's a motion to second. Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. All in favor? To put this on the agenda. What I, what I understand the motion is is for a study session on the indoor Inyo Corridor Project. The city manager touched on that.
But there is something going on. It may not be funded, but. I mean, even if I have to pull out the twenty-two year old study that Michael Miller sent me, the first day I got elected to city council. I'll bring that plan for you guys to look at. It's twenty-two years old, but it was a master plan on the Inyo Street. I mean, there's enough to talk. I just want people to know that there's challenges to building on the West Side, you know, so that's all I'm asking. And remember, we have a stu- a two-step process. Here is step one where I asked it to be on the agenda. Step two is where we where we vote on the direction and then a study session happens. The next step is not the study session itself. It's to actually. Talk kind of more thorough conversation amended. So I'm just asking for step one to be.
With the study, the corridor. Corridor and the West Side study. Which is already been completed. It's heartbreaking for me to learn that today.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor? Moving forward, twelve point two, ad hoc committee for possible transit corridor between Tulare and Corcoran, Councilman Segala.
Yes, uh, as described in the request, uh, again, the step one, uh, the idea, I've I've talked to, uh. Uh, council members in Corcoran, the mayor and a couple of council members, talked to Ted Smalley, had a brief conversation with Liz Nguyen from Vicelia. Uh, through my role on TCAG about the idea of developing a corridor between Corcoran, their Amtrak station. And our COS Tulare Campus and Transit Center. So it'd be a pilot program where we would have shuttles that would bring people back and forth. So all I'm asking for tonight is for the ability for us to put it on the agenda, again, put it on the agenda, uh, a future agenda item. To have the cut, the the conversation about creating an ad hoc committee between two of our council members and two council members from Corcoran. To talk about the idea of this corridor. I talked to Ted Smalley about the process. He highly recommends that this is the best way to go about it. In other words, have the cities talk about it, then approach TCAG, TCRTA, CART. And Kings County Association of Governments, once we have an idea. So this would help bring people together from both cities. It would help students in Corcoran go to COS. It would help our folks go to Amtrak Station. And, uh, I think it would, it would not be a too costly. Project where Ted Smalley would help fund through TCAG the project. So all I'm asking is to put it on the agenda to have further conversation about the ad hoc committee. I would like to make a motion to to do so.
So twelve point two, ad hoc committee for possible transit. There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, twelve point two, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll move to a vote. All in favor? Item twelve point three, amend section Y of chapter two of the council's handbook, rules and procedures.
Yes, so, um, as noted in my my form, I went ahead and wanted to, and I and I did have a. A lengthy conversation with city manager about some of my concerns, uh, and I know I've heard from other colleagues on this dais about concerns about things coming back. Uh, to the council on agenda, uh, on a timely fashion. And so what I'm recommending or asking is that we have a conversation on amending two sections of the handbook. That would make it a little more clear as to the processes, as to when things would come back. And then, uh, formalizing the tracking, monitoring process and then having quarterly updates to the council. So, um, I'm requesting that we put it on the agenda to have a more thorough discussion on it. So I I'm to to have this on a future agenda.
Can I ask the city manager, can you bring, can you provide the quarterly? Status of the agenda items so that on a regular basis like we're doing now with. With, uh, uh, economic development that Jennifer's doing?
Yes, I could do that.
Okay, so that we wouldn't necessarily have to do a modification of the existing handbook that we have?
Yes, if that was council's direction, that in every quarter I give you guys on the council agenda update on what the status is of the projects that have received. The first step vote and when it's going to be scheduled for the second step vote, I can absolutely do that.
Okay, with that representation, it'd be my position that it's unnecessary to make any amendment. Along the lines of what's indicated in this item and I'd be opposed to it.
Well, I I'll tell you this, I love Mr. Maderos because some days he's, uh, willing not to follow the rules and get things done without.
Voluntarily working with you. You don't have to turn it into an attack. Position, Mr. Segala.
Gotta be consistent. You've asked me to follow the rules and put in a council file item. And then we're getting the city manager to do something. I could have just asked him and he could have, I don't know if he would have said yes or no to me. I didn't have to put it on here. So I'm just following the rules. I'm just following the rules that were laid out to me.
We have a motion. Is there a second on twelve point three, amend section Y of chapter two? Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second. Okay, with that, twelve point three, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will go to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, twelve point three. Thirteen staff updates. We'll go around the room. Mr. Orr, I start to my left.
Yeah, I just wanted to let council know August fifteenth, we're doing our second movie in the park at Zumwalt. We had one at July twenty-fifth. We got approximately five hundred people there, so we're having a great turnout. Uh, hope to see you there. That's all I have.
Fantastic.
Uh, just a quick update. Friday afternoon, there was a car accident at Cross and West. Um, it took out, completely demolished our traffic cabinet. Um, we were able to get it back up and running temporarily and flash and get the overhead lights running. Uh, but it'll probably take us a few weeks before we get a new cabinet, get it installed and get that, uh, intersection back into normal operation. So we at least wanted to get it in flash before school started on Thursday, um, but it'll take us a few weeks to get it back in full operation. And the issue on cart mill yesterday was a contractor hit our electric line going to the signals. Um, I believe they got it back in flash yesterday afternoon. I'm not sure if we are back into normal operation today, but that was due to a contractor issue.
Nothing tonight. Nothing to report.
Uh, this is my first meeting up on the dais and just wanted to say thank you guys very much. I'm very excited about this new role and new opportunities.
So Jason, there's an expectation you have a report at every meeting, by the way. I don't know if the group told you that. Nothing to report here.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing to report.
Uh, nothing to report today.
Nothing to report.
I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Tammy Thomas, our Public Safety Dispatcher, retiring after twenty-six years of service on the third. Um, she's been with us through every critical incident and she's a long time dispatcher and I just want to congratulate her. On Friday, we're losing Captain Matt Machado to twenty-six years of service. Um, he's been a captain. We got promoted to captain together in twenty fourteen or fifteen. And, uh, he's got about a year on me here at the PD and, uh, we're excited for his, uh, his new path, so. And uh, he's got about a year on me here at the PD, and uh, we're excited for his uh, his new path, so. We're losing about a half century of experience in this whole week, and uh, we'll be doing promotions and other things to fill those positions. Thank you.
So Chief, how about with that, as we close our meeting in honor of Tammy Thomas and Captain Machado on their years of service and retirement, and our utmost appreciation to them.
Thank you.
Are you having a party?
No, they want to go out very quietly.
I talked to Matt and he said, no way.
Nothing to nightmare.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Again, I also want to thank uh our new deputy city manager, Jason Bowling. Welcome him to the dais and our new director of general services, Manny Korea, welcome him. Um, there's a lot of issues that have come up over the time that I've been here that only those two gentlemen can answer, so it's really great to have them up here with us. Uh, I also want to remind council when we did the parks master plan presentation and we talked about all the great programming things that we're doing. Um, we have two new programming items that are coming forward in the near future. One is line dancing at Zumwalt Park in the evenings. We're working on that. And the second, and I expect all of you to be there for this, is Tai Chi with chai tea. We haven't set the time for that yet, but that's something all of us can do and probably benefit from. That's all I have.
My daughter would like that.
I'll go line dancing.
All right, so with that, we are going to go into closed session. Uh, council, is there anything you need to report?
Uh, unlikely we'll report anything out.
Oh, no, going into closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, let me bring the, let me announce items. I got it. Just one item to nightmare. Uh, so it's conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D four, just one case.
Okay, and in process, I know we, I guess mainly if it's just tradition, if we had you announce that, I guess anybody or a mayor could just announce that as well. Does it have to be you?
It does not have to be.
Okay.
But one evening. Uh, so the effect we have been before this time? Maybe you can use some.
No, that's.
Or what? Or if we are.